Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for May 7, 2019. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Contreras is absent.
Thank you very much. We're going to have item number two, a pledge of allegiance. If we could all stand for the presentation of the colors by troop 619. And now, troop 619 will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, any changes, corrections?
Nothing on the agenda per se, Mr. Mayor, but just FYI, I know there are several people here that want to talk to item 4E1, which is currently on the consent agenda, so that I will remove that and put it on the regular agenda.
Okay. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A second.
Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to item number four, consent agenda. And we already had one item taken off 4A, 4E1. And councilors? Counselor Lehman?
4D1. And 4A3.
All right. And others? Counselor Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as modified.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second by Counselor Brennan. Before we vote on the consent agenda, we will read it into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are consent agenda items for May 7 of 2019. 4A1 approves the minutes of the April 16, 2019 meeting. 4A2 approves the application and grants a temporary on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license to the Shakopee Lions Club for their softball tournament held at Toppa Park located at 1490 Adams Street from May 31 to June 2 of 2019. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-053, which approves an amendment to the Shakopee Fire Department Relief Association bylaws, including a pension benefit increase. 4C1 approves a temporary on-sale liquor license, which authorizes a street closure and support for the Big Taste of Fun, featuring Minnesota Ironman Bike Race Event hosted by the Parks and Recreation Department, JCI Shakopee, Minnesota Ironman, and Free Bikes for Kids. 4E2 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-051, which awards a contract in the amount of $2,869,489.38 to SM Heniges &amp; Son Incorporated for the 12th Avenue Reconstruction Project, which is CIF-TAC-19-TAC-004. 4E3 authorizes execution of an agreement with the Metropolitan Council to participate in the 2019 Citizen-Assisted Monitoring Program. 4E4 authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with SRF Consulting Group Incorporated for construction services for the 12th Avenue Reconstruction Project, which is Project CIF-TAC-19-TAC-004. 4E5 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-054, which approves plans and orders the advertisement for bids for the 2019 Trail Rehabilitation Project, CIPF-TAC-19-TAC-001, and the 2019 Trail Reconstruction Project, which is PA-TAC-19-TAC-01. And finally, 4E6 authorizes the purchase and execution of an agreement for ESRI software licenses.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I had a motion and a second. We have read the modified consent agenda into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda has been approved. Item number five, now I'd like to call any resident citizen that would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address to the record, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Mary Dodson, and I live at 205 First Avenue East in Shakopee, Minnesota. I am here to report on my observations over the past several months on First Avenue East between Fuller and Holmes. On April 28, at approximately 7:10 PM, I disembarked from the bus up there on Holmes, I believe it is, and I stopped at one of the bars on First Avenue East to request that the folks in there closed the door to the bar, as there was a great deal of noise, music, and a lot of other stuff emanating from said door. I went home, and even though the server said that it would be closed, it was not. I made my way down to the crosswalk through a blue cloud of smoke. I've charted my sleep loss Fridays and Saturdays for the month of April, and I have observed during April the following on Friday, Saturdays, and Sundays. I've observed that First Avenue East is becoming a raceway to motorized vehicles, automobiles, motorcycles, pickups, and so on. I've also observed coming from across the street from my residence, loud yelling, lewd behavior that includes public urination, coitus between what seem to be consenting adults, spitting on the street. I've also observed the unmuffler vehicles. I have observed drunken behavior by large groups that make themselves known on that street, right in front of a couple of bars. I've decided that I no longer will become a victim. There's the old adage, "You can't fight City Hall." It's true, and I understand that. So from now on, I will take some steps to eliminate myself from the list of victims. But before I do that, before I tell you what I'm going to do about that, I would like to invite the city council and any other interested members to please revisit city code 1, excuse me, 130.45 and 130.99. I would suggest to those operations, those business operations, the following steps. I understand also that to suggest these kinds of things to municipal icons is kind of like whistling in the dark. I would suggest that those business owners can find smoking, conversations, and other items on the concrete patio areas attached to and south of their buildings. I would also suggest, after having a conversation with a very, very polite officer last night in the police department, that there would be a police foot and/or squad patrol on East Avenue during those very volatile times. And finally, in removing myself from the victim list, if you can't beat them, join them in a respectful, quieting manner at each occurrence. So I'm sleeping in my street clothes, folks, and at least three times a night, I expect to make my way down from the third floor with my trusty little flashlight and my, I think I'll bring a Coke, since I don't drink anymore. Thank you very much. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Mary, very much. Counselor Lehman?
Mary, I want to clarify just a couple of points with you, please. That, what time was it that you asked that the door be shut?
That was, that was at 7:10 PM.
And when you, when you say First Avenue, you're talking about the street between the businesses, not the highway side?
The street between the businesses and River City Center.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments. Item number five, any resident citizen that would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda, please state your name and address to the record. Commissioner Michael Beard, welcome.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mike Beard, 8434 Horizon Drive, Shakopee. I do represent District 3 on the county commission, which is the most of the city of Shakopee. And as such, I thought I would stop down tonight for a couple reasons. It's a beautiful spring evening, if you haven't been outside. As soon as I'm done speaking with you, I'm going to go put on my play clothes and mow my yard, which will be kind of therapeutic after the long, hard winter we had. So I wanted to stop down and just say thank you for your service to this town and for, yeah, just for being here every other week. Just one thing of update that might be of interest between the county and the city, that you will be getting notified of a groundbreaking sometime early June, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, somewhere around there. Block that time off on your schedule. We're going to do a groundbreaking on the new government center. We've been having some contract lettings, openings, openings, I should say, and we're very pleased with the way the bids are coming in, apparently sharp pencils. Either that, or we had very generous engineering estimates, but to the moment, it looks like we're about $5 or $6 million underestimates as we're moving ahead with the new government center program. Thank you to you and your staff for working with us on the parking issues and on the building permits, and as we get this thing put together, it's come together quite nicely. So, Mr. Mayor, other than that, I had no agenda, other than to come down and say hello. I remember you, I think of you, and I'm glad you're there, and it's an honor to serve you on the county board. I'll take one question, as long as it's a softball and they're pitching underhanded.
Thank you, Commissioner, Counselor Whiting.
I just wanted, no question, just wanted to thank you for stopping in. You do regularly, and we appreciate that.
You're welcome to it. Have a nice rest of the evening. Now, I'm going to go home and be lawn boy, so.
Any other resident citizen that would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward. Seeing none, we would move ahead then. Item number six, business removed from consent, and we will start with 4A3. Counselor Lehman? Pay adjustment for the city administrator.
Well, Mayor, there's not a whole lot we can discuss, since a lot of this is covered under data practices. I just wanted the opportunity, I thought 7% on top of the COLA was a little more than I could support, so I wanted the opportunity to place that in a no vote.
All right. Okay. Other comments? Counselor Whiting?
We discussed this at good length in our closed session, so I would make a motion to approve of a 7% increase for the city administrator back dated to January 1, 2019.
A second.
I have a motion, a second, further discussion. I think the positive impact of having Bill Reynolds for the last many years in our community has been outstanding in many, many facets, also to stay competitive, but show support. Here is our council, I know we talked about supporting and trying to be in a position to be successful as a community and as our city administrator. I look forward to that continued relationship for a long time. Counselor Lehman?
Well, legally, I can, I can say that the overall summation of the evaluation was meeting or above expectation, so that's not the issue at hand. The issue for me is strictly a seven plus three is 10. Seems excessive for a once, one-time shot, so it is what it is.
All right. Appreciate the comments. Counselor Brennan?
I considered that also, but we did base it on, on our conversations that we had, based it on a dollar amount and not actual, an actual percentage amount, so I do agree that with the amount that we have stated.
Further discussion? Counselor Whiting?
No, I would just add that since Mr. Reynolds had came to us, I don't, I know we've given him some cost of living increases, but the leaps and bounds that this city has grown as a city department and all departments is amazing, and I think it's worth, worth every cent.
Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 4D1, resolution of support for the Shakopee Housing Group LLC, Core Crossings, and Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Mayor, I took this off consent. Obviously, the many on council, my position hasn't really changed. These dollars come from the Met Council, which get it from the taxpayers and their property taxes and the state of Minnesota. So, you know, in my view, we're taking, using money from households to make other households more affordable, and really what we're doing is making the existing households less affordable, so.
Counselor Whiting?
Thank you. You know, we've done, we have two projects in the work now for workforce-level housing. We have many market-rate apartments and several single-family homes. We talk about housing as a life-cycle housing. We've done some senior projects in the past. Here's some examples of some of the housing we have. This is another opportunity to fill out some of our housing needs. So with that, I'd offer a resolution to, a motion to adopt Resolution R20219-056, supporting an application by Minnesota Housing Shakopee Housing Group LLC for low-income housing tax credits for 59 units, targeting families at or below 60% of area median income.
A second.
I have a motion, a second, further discussion. I have a comment. This developer, Sands Company, is already in our community. They're doing a project out at Southbridge. It's a market-rate apartment north of the transit station there. They also have a facility just across the street from Cub Foods off of Viarling that I've driven through that area. That project's been up for well over 10 or 12 years. Never a problem there. They have their own park area there where they, those folks play. You would never know it, but it's already in our community, and I deem Sands a pretty good developer and property manager. Come forward with another project, so. Counselor Brennan?
I believe that this is housing for people who need it the most, and I believe that this is our responsibility to provide it.
And also, this is not an ask of anything of the city. It's in support of some tax credit that comes from the state or the federal, but it's not a true ask of, of the city. And that's what they're looking for, so. Further, my motion on the table, and a second, further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes four, or three to one. So, the next item pulled off consent is 4E1, the 2022 Street Improvement Project, the Advancement of Wood Duck Trail. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've been informed that there are several members of the public that would like to address this issue. Also, Steve Lilly-Hogg obviously is available to discuss the details. I don't know if you want to start with maybe the citizens, and then we can
Okay.
provide some more detail.
So if a resident would like to come forward and make comment on this, we would do that. Some brief comments, either one by one or as a group. And this segment of your, of that road gave way in our recent snow rainstorm. Please state, please state your name and address to the record, and welcome.
Thank you. Mike Lee, 1815 Wood Duck Trail. We're basically concerned with the preliminary assessment or information that we received just yesterday on the cost of redoing a road that was essentially built for 10 homes at one point and now serves closer to 70. We'd like to know exactly what the plan is and how it's going to transpire concerning everyone who uses that road, not just the seven houses that are right now on the docket to pay that tax. When, I believe it was 2015, Marshall Road was reconstructed, and they took away a couple of entrances and exits, which now we only have two roads that serve the neighborhoods. And the increasing traffic, trucks, just all the additions to the housing that's been going on has more than done its fair share of damage to the roads, and we just want to make sure that it's fair, that, you know, I don't think we're the ones should be stuck with paying the total on this.
Mr. Lee, have you lived in your property for a long time?
Almost five years.
Huh? 25?
Almost five.
Oh, okay. All right. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, two questions for, what was your name?
Mike.
Did anybody explain the assessment policy?
Not as of yet. We just saw information yesterday, so this is my first time. I apologize.
Okay.
Looking to get some more information.
Yep. And I'll give you just a rough overview, but the city staff will take care of that for you too tonight. When it's deemed a public benefit, which that road now with some of the access is removed and serving more properties and stuff, the policy is a 70% by the general taxpayers in general, and 30% of the project cost is then split up amongst the properties fronting. So basically, 70% of the project is paid for by myself, even though I don't drive that road daily.
Yep, I read that. I understand that.
Okay. And did you have an estimate on what the assessments would be?
This is just what we received yesterday.
And this is really preliminary, because we don't have any?
Correct.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Usually they're, they're high until?
8666.
Okay.
And according to this, that's, looks like it may be on the lower side.
Well, from my experience, it usually starts out on the high side, and as we work through the process, it usually comes down. But even at that, I can tell you that 10 years ago, my road in front of my house was almost 4,000, so.
Okay. Well, some other questions I had on here, it shows, and this may just be preliminary. Again, I don't know, but you've got some things in here concerning sewer, which we don't have.
Right.
Storm drainage, which nobody maintains any ditch or anything like that except for us. So I'm just wondering what some of this stuff means.
Both of them cost in the policy are removed from the project cost and paid for by the storm, the sewer fund itself and the storm water fund. And then based on what your system is and the, and the life of it and efficiency of it, you either are going to hook into that system and utilize it, since it's going to be in front of your house, or you're going to wait until you actually need it, and there's a certain time, time period that you have to do that of years.
Okay. All right.
Staff will be more accurate on this than I can, but.
And we can certainly get you more information on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Heather Berent, and I live right next door to Mike. We have lived on this road for 20 years, 1750 Wood Duck Trail. I am only talking because these are my neighbors and have been for a long time. This doesn't affect me, because my house, where mine sits, got grandfathered in with the County Road 17 project. But I came and talked to the council back in 2011, when this was tabled, and we were told in their letter that we didn't know why. Well, let me tell you why. The first lot on Wood Duck Trail is city-owned, and there's now a water, oh, not tower.
Torch tank, yep.
Holding tank there. Thank you. When we built our house in 99, we were told by the city, within 10 years, to plan on city water and sewer on our street. And Matt, this might bring a bell to you, because, again, I talked to this group eight years ago. So in 2011, I said, "What's going to happen when all of a sudden you want to force us now to do city water and sewer? You're going to fix the road now, and in three years, are you going to come back at us and say, 'We're going to tear it all up, and you all have to hook up again and have a ton of money'?" Not okay. That road has been left to rot, is what has been done. It was sealed once in 2002, not ever since, except the new part. So even knowing that there was an issue... So even knowing that there was an issue, it was left to rot. Back in 2011, when we looked at this, the quote was similar, actually more, than what is being quoted now, which less road makes a little sense, but doesn't. And at that time, the data that I looked at showed other houses and other additions that have three and a half or two and a half, three acres, like we all do, were getting assessed somewhere between 15 to $2,000, 1,500 to $2,000. Yet our estimate was somewhere upwards of almost $9,000, similar to what it was now. So for these guys, I just say, think about it. The city closed off two entrances. That has encouraged this road to rot. It was not set up to house and to handle traffic of 70 homes. It was set up for 10, and it was poorly set up. Mr. Looney admitted to that back then, that different times, we built to different. It wasn't built to standard, blah, 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 at that time. And now it's left to sit there and rot.
Thank you. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a point of clarification. The, in the memorandum, the $8,666 per lot, that is not any recent computations. That is a number from the 2011 memo that was indicated in that memo, those costs at that time. So right now, we have not done any estimating. We plan on doing a proceeding with a full feasibility study, assessment hearings, public improvement hearings. We plan on doing an appraisal assessment for the benefiting properties because it is an unusual project with the larger lots, larger frontage. We do follow, we do plan on evaluating the assessment policy for this project to look for consistency across the city. And hopefully, we can improve, we can proceed with the project this summer. We did have a couple, some public outreach to the neighborhood in the recent weeks. Number one, we closed the road because of the snowfall. But then I did send a letter updating them that we would be asking for permission to proceed with the feasibility study tonight. And there will be a lot more information and a lot more public outreach and involvement as we proceed here. So a lot of questions. I don't have answers tonight because we simply have not evaluated it. And I've really never looked at this road, you know, in the regard for reconstruction at this point. So more to come.
Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Lilahog. Do we know at this point whether there'll be sewer and water part of this project?
Councilmembers and mayor, right now, there's no initiative to extend sanitary sewer or water to this area of town at this point. So that would not be on the table unless we receive the petition. It's not immediately available for these properties. But we do not have plans with this section or the other. In 2020, we have a larger project, and we didn't plan on it with that at all, with that whole neighborhood either. But it is something we could further consider if the council desires.
Just a quick follow-up, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the closing of those other accesses was a county issue? Didn't start with the city?
Correct. That was, that was done under the county's project, and they did do those closings of the access points.
Thank you.
And then we'll come to you, Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, if I recall, back in 2011, when this did come up before the council, there was a limited amount of properties that were actually utilizing that stretch. And the majority of the residents at the time felt that there wasn't enough usage besides just them few residents to warrant the improvements. And they knew that it would be coming later. But at the time, it was like, you know, we can seal code it or whatever it is they do to maintain it and get by for a while with such limited usage. And this question is directed to our engineer, but does, what's the name of that road that they put in? Is that Juniper? Does that now tie into this?
Jennifer Lehman.
That's on the, that's on the west side.
Okay, yeah, that's on the other side of the road. Okay. Yep, so, I mean, we've had issues with this road for a long time. I don't know if the sub-bas is washed out or what, but.
All right. So just a little bit of recap for the audience and the residents. You know, this was up for debate, you know, eight years ago and didn't proceed. Now we're in a situation where the road failed, and it had been programmed for 2022 to get upgraded and improved. And now with the road failure, we're trying to find a way to move that up, to redo that road. Should we have done it in 2011? Maybe. But now, we're in a situation where there's a road failure and impacting the residents. So, and the start of it is this, which is very preliminary to advance it. And there'll be hearings, public hearings. The numbers would be dialed in a lot harder to get a real idea of the overall cost. Counselor Lehman is correct. You know, if there was sewer or water, those are not included.
Storm.
Huh?
Stormwater.
And stormwater wouldn't be included. Just really the cost of the road and then standard city policy of a 70/30 assessment for all standard roads. But I think this process here tonight, just to advance it, doesn't mean that it's going to go forward or we're not approving it. We're just advancing it. There would be a series of votes over the next many months coming forward on that as we dial in those numbers, so. Counselor Lehman?
We're actually looking at approving, giving our staff permission to spend some money that you don't have to repay to do a feasibility study, to find out more details on what it would actually take.
Thank you for being patient. Welcome. Your name and address?
Joe Cybrant, and I live at 1915 Wood Duck Trail. Moved in in February of 98, so we've been there, you know, we're one of the first ones in. And love it out there. And just one thing I want you to consider when you look at the 70/30 is that that road started to fail. There was work done, as you said, in 2011, and it started to fail probably in 2010. It wasn't that old, and that was our argument too, which, you know, roads should last longer than that. Might, I have a theory. I don't have a fact as far as what I'm going to say. But the area that is really, especially out in front of, you know, my house, I'm kind of in the middle of all of it. But there's a swath of trees going through there, and I'm guessing for decades or maybe centuries, it was a wooded area. And I know there's some punky ground under that road. They're going to find some soils down there that they're probably decide they're going to have to take them out. I'm not positive about that, but I'm pretty sure, because I have some actually in my driveway too. So if you could just consider that thought that, you know, I don't myself, I don't put roads in, but I don't feel that everything was done for that road to have a nice, long life, you know. I've been in my house now. It's been 21 years, so I've been there for a while. My thought moving in was I'd probably see sewer and water come in before I'd be replacing a road because the road, when I moved in, it was probably two or three years old. So I think that development sat there for a little bit. I'm not exactly sure. But, but just consider kind of the road that was put in. Maybe when you do go out and check it out, there was a concern that the thickness of the asphalt isn't necessarily maybe where it should have been either. So if you can just kind of consider some of those things for us, I'd appreciate it, and I think my neighbors would too, so.
Can I ask you how big your lot is?
2.6.
Over 2.5, I'm not, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's an old area, and that road, you know, does get used. And, you know, I feel that, you know, now we have a failure. Why is a, was it a substandard road to begin with? I don't know. We had an opportunity to fix it in 2011. We didn't. Here we are today. Needs to be fixed and find a way to do that.
I'll be honest with you. When they did the repairs in 2011, I thought they did a good job. They actually, they were digging some of this soil, bad soils, out. And I was really shocked to see it blowing up like it is this year. I could see last year, when you start seeing that checkering in the asphalt, you know, something's going. But, you know, it is what it is. But just, again, please just consider what my thoughts were on as far as the original road that was put in and what it was put on, and be as gentle as you can.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Do we know if that was a developer-built road or a city-built road? We'll have to check into that.
We can check into that. I don't know.
Can find out.
I think it's important to recognize, though, that standards over the years for roads do change. And this was put in over 23, 24 years ago. So it's certainly feasible and understandable that the road is not up to today's standards. I mean, that's probably absolutely correct.
Anybody else like to come forward? No? Like I said, this is kind of the start of the process. It's not a final decision. We need a feasibility study. We need assessment benefits. Several decisions down the line. We'll have some neighborhood meetings, I suspect additional. Stay involved. This is your area, your road. Also, you know, part of it benefits the entire community. There is going to be future growth to the south eventually of your area. So, Counselor Whiting?
Counselor Lehman talked about his assessment, and I had my assessment three years ago, and a council member doesn't get to get out of that either, so it does come around. They charge me, they charge me plenty, but it's part of the deal. And as the mayor said, this is the start of the process. We don't have the answers right now, but this will start the process to get the answers. So with that, I would make a motion to authorize the advancement of, excuse me, advancement of a portion of the 2022 pavement rehabilitation project, CIF 22-002, to reconstruct Wood Duck Trail between Hoentstein Court and Maple Trail.
I have a motion, and Counselor Lehman?
I'll second that motion.
I have a second. Further discussion? Discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Well, I wanted to speak to the motion, Mayor. I think you're right on, right on the money. We've got a failed road here that's going to have to get fixed. We don't know what it's going to cost. And we can't find out what it's going to cost unless we take an action tonight, directing our staff to do a feasibility study to see what it's going to take to fix this road and bring that information back. I'm confident our staff is going to work directly with the property owners that are affected, keeping them in the loop and updating them on the information that they're finding. So there will be opportunity for all of us to get together again multiple times and discuss what we found, what we're planning on doing, how it might affect. Maybe the road gets wider, maybe it gets narrower, how it's built. Does it have stormwater and gutter now? Will that be added? Will that cost be removed? What the recommendation of the assessment policy might be if it's different from our current policy of 70/30 because of the large lots and these types of things? All that stuff will be flushed out early on in the process, so everybody will be on the same page. So I'm totally in favor. We got to fix the road.
Right.
Broken.
And there, this was not a public hearing tonight, but there certainly will be opportunities in a public hearing setting to speak either for, against us, or staff will make presentations as well. A lot more information, a lot more, you know, sharpening the pencil and coming down to decision point over the next many months. But I thank you very much for your interest and feedback on this as it's been a rocky road, as they say. So, thank you all. We have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead then to item number seven, recess for the EDA meeting. And we will entertain a motion to stand in recess. Counselor Lehman?
Make a motion to recess to the EDA meeting.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to recess to the EDA. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. President, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you. Welcome to the Shakopee Economic Development Authority, May 7th meeting. Please make note of the role. Looks like we're going for the record tonight, so let's start with item number two. Mr. Lehman?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? 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 All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have item number three, consent business, which includes the EDA minutes. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll move the EDA minutes or consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Discussion? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Last for your perusal is item number four, the EDA bill list. Any questions on the bill list?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to approve the EDA bill list for May 7, 2019.
We have a motion on the floor. It's not necessary.
Mr. President, yeah. That's right. I apologize. I would draw my.
But if you have any questions, we'll accept the bill list. Item number five is next. Mr. Lehman?
I suppose if I dance around just a little bit, you won't get your world record here, so.
I think we, I think we already lost the world record.
I'll make a motion, Mr. President, to adjourn to May 21st at 7:00 PM.
A second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Well, it would have gone faster if I would have made that motion. I apologize.
We would have had the record.
All right. Let's reconvene the City Council meeting for the City of Shakopee for May 7, 2019. We are on 9B1 gift card ordinance. Chief Tate, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm excited to finally be able to present this ordinance, an ordinance regarding certain third-party gift card purchases, which we believe will have a positive impact on the number of frauds we see on a regular basis here in Shakopee. The fraudulent procurement of these gift, these third-party gift cards at retail establishments in the city has become a widespread and significant problem. These incidents affect numerous victims and require considerable law enforcement resources to investigate. We know this ordinance will not stop all frauds, but we do believe it will significantly limit some of the opportunities for fraud to occur in our city. This initiative started over a year ago. In fact, the first draft of this ordinance was sent out on May 4 of last year, so we just covered a year. I'm very proud of the process that we've been through. I want to thank right off the get-go here Bruce Newsted and Angie Whitcomb for all their work on this, specifically Bruce. He's been very, very good and always gotten back to me with any questions and comments. This did go through a considerable vetting process. I think it's important right off the bat here to throw out there that this ordinance that's before you today is significantly different from what we initially proposed, okay? This is not my ideal ordinance. I wanted it to go a lot farther. I think it would have helped us in terms of our ability to solve cases and solve them quicker and limit the opportunities for fraud. But why is it different? We listened. We took their input. We understood their concerns in most areas. We agreed to, you know, not necessarily agree on everything. But we did take the necessary steps to, I think, hammer out a workable ordinance. I think it is important for retail to step up at this point and try and make things better in terms of gift card purchases. The last draft went out in February. We heard nothing back until some of the concerns that were mailed out to you folks in the last week or so. Why are we here? This goes back several years, and I have to go back to our late crime prevention specialist, Jana Wood. And I remember walking through the patrol area one time, and she said, "If we could just get stores to put their gift cards behind the counter, I could eliminate..." just get stores to put their gift cards behind the counter, I could eliminate half of all frauds in this city." And that just always stuck with me. I kept walking, but it always stuck with me. And then last year, at one of our establishments at a self-checkout, we witnessed an individual come in with a stack of clone cards. That individual tried loading up a Visa prepaid. Now, the first swipe didn't work, second didn't work, the 10th didn't work, the 20th didn't work, the 30th didn't work. I believe it was the 36th swipe, he was able to load $1,000 on a Visa gift card and walk out the door. That's too easy. That's too easy. This is taking way too much time and resources, which are significant on our department. Last year's fraud was up just over 17%. And I've talked about before the impact these frauds have in terms of our investigative time. Rarely are they just confined within our borders. Oftentimes, they involve more than one store, whether it's grabbing surveillance or bank records or subpoenas. It's a significant time. Right now, our investigators have, on average, 32 cases apiece.
Thirty-two cases?
Thirty-two.
Each.
Each. That's not acceptable, in my view. We're working on that, but a large part of those are fraud, and it takes a long time for subpoenas and records to come back, surveillance and try and match things up. Before I get any further too, I also want to thank Captain Robson and Detective Phil Sendelbach for their work on this. Phil is an absolute expert on this type of thing, and having his input was vital. Again, fraud is a major issue. We could come to you and say, with a lot of data, and say, "We need another investigator," but that would cost, you know what it costs to add another police officer? That's over $100,000 when you fully load everything. So we think that we can at least try something here and see if this will work. These are sophisticated rings that immediately, and a lot of times, will wire money out of the country. Recently, we had a case where they wired money to Cuba. I read an article the other day where there was one group out east that is responsible for over $2 million worth of fraudulent gift card procurements. A proactive police unit was talking to me, and they said, "You know, we rarely make an arrest for methamphetamine and don't find somebody with a Visa, MasterCard, American Express gift card." So it runs the gamut from the sophisticated retail to the local drug user. And these are just the ones we hear about. We know that a lot of these go unreported, actually. This is not a victimless crime. You're going to hear from Brenda Arvidson in a few minutes. A lot of times, people have to stop their automatic payments. I had one individual, couldn't be here tonight, but informed me that he had to use vacation time to take care of his credit issues for having his ID compromised and purchases that were made. And I think it's important to remember and balance the needs that this is not just a cost on our resources as a police department. That's our job, but there's also a cost to the community as well. The Federal Trade Commission recently reported that third-party gift cards are now the number one reported method of payment for imposter scams. That's up over 270% since 2015. So this is a vehicle. Why is that? Criminals favor these cards because they can get cash quickly, the transactions are largely irreversible, and they can remain relatively anonymous throughout. It's time to put a speed bump in that smooth lane of traffic that they have right now. We knew retailers wouldn't love this. Okay? I read that gift cards, I think, for 12 years in a row have been the number one Christmas gift. I buy a lot of them. Retail is highly competitive and a bottom-line business. We understand this, and again, gave considerable consideration and went through a completely different ordinance than what we're proposing today based on where this started from. So I do think it's important that they meet us a little bit on this, too. Interestingly, and I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus in case their boss is watching here, but we've talked to plenty of loss prevention personnel, both in the city and outside the city. They love this, they want this, they know that this is a problem in the stores. So summary of the ordinance, what is it? And hopefully alleviate any confusion that somebody may have about this. First and foremost, this only affects three types of cards. Okay? We can't have narrowed this down any more than, and be any more specific than we have. These are Visa, MasterCard, and American Express, and only if you purchase them with a credit card. Buy as many Buffalo Wildwing gift cards, Target gift cards, Applebee's, whatever you want to do. Load them up, go to your self-checkouts, that's not what this ordinance prohibits. This ordinance would prohibit any purchase of those three cards at a self-checkout, and would require that anyone using a credit card to purchase that simply show identification that matches the name of the card. If you have a business card, that's fine, that's not what we're after. We're trying to create an obstacle, again, to keep the fraud out of Shakopee. If you have cash, check, if you have an app on your phone, that, you know, Google Pay or whatever that is, that's fine. I'm guessing they're going to ask you for an ID if you want to pay with a check, but that's, none of that applies. This is a very, very fine line that this ordinance addresses. Again, we're taking out the, and restricting the self-loaded, for these three cards at the self-checkouts, that is a path of least resistance. And according to one retailer in one of our meetings, they shared with us a little bit of what their, the amount that they have at these self-checkouts. It pales into comparison to what they do already at the normal checkout. So most people are going to the regular checkout lane and not the self-checkout. Again, we stay away from anything else. We don't want people disrupted when they're, seems like I have to do this every week, go get a $20 Target gift card to throw in for my kid's birthday that they're going to. We're not out to, you know, do stings, and we want to work with the retailers, and we want to address this, this really major concern that we have. So why those three cards? I think the best way to do that is describe a case that's not too old but all too familiar, and this is only a two-week-old case. I'm going to quote directly from the detective's interview of this suspect. He was caught, over 10 victims, several different stores in town, all preloaded, you know, gift cards that would apply here. And he was asked why he did that. And he replied that he knew KDOT, had used them, and been able to purchase them in these stores before, and that they sold the right kind of gift card. Let me repeat that, they sold the right kind of gift card. These are the specific cards that most of our criminals that we deal with and this type of thing are singling out. Interestingly, when he was caught, he literally had these Visa gift cards hanging out of his pocket. They target specific cards at specific businesses where they know they'll be successful. I can share examples like that all day long. Incidentally, I think it's interesting to note that that individual was caught. Why? Because the store that he was at for his last purchase did what? They asked him to show an ID. He'd been in there loading up gift cards before, they asked him to show his ID, they wound up getting his plate, and we were able to catch him. Again, they pick these cards because they can turn them into cash quickly and anonymously. They're not worried about the fees that are associated with activating those type of cards. I really honestly don't think we're asking too much from retailers here. That said, I understand their concerns. I think we've been frankly very sensitive to their concerns, and I want to address a few of them here. You know, they talk about, they're worried about the extra time at the cash register, or requirement to display ID will hurt sales. That's very difficult for me to accept, frankly. It takes only a few seconds to pull your identification out. How do I know that? Well, last Thursday, I was in one of these stores, and I grabbed a box of NyQuil tablets off the counter, and I went through the register, and what happened? The transaction was stopped, I was asked to show my ID. I didn't just show my ID, I had to turn it around, and they scanned it with their gun. Nobody behind me, and there were several people behind me, got upset, dropped their merchandise and left. It took 10, 15 seconds. That's all it was. People generally don't, at least in my experience, don't buy gift cards on an impulse. You go there because you know you're going to do it, you know you're going to give someone that. No other city does this. I understand that. We're taking a first step here. I don't believe anybody in Minnesota, and I know one of the letters talked about nationally, is doing this, and it's always a little nervous when you take in the first step. Again, that's part of the reason we work so hard on that. It's obviously generated some interest, but I would say, good. Why wouldn't we want fraudsters to stay away? Better yet, why would a reputable retailer want that, this element in their store in the first place? What else are they walking away with? Rarely do these people operate alone. And I think of the time that their loss prevention staff spends, going back, reviewing video, trying to find the needle in the haystack when we get this reported several days later. Requiring the presentation of a photo identification will impact consumers that are hesitant to share their identification, may lead to more identification thefts. Again, I don't, I don't buy that because there are other things where you're buying a box of ammo or NyQuil, for examples, you have to show your identification. So you're already doing that. The sharing of an ID to a store employee at a point of purchase is not something that impacts fraud or identity theft. The National White Collar Crime Center will tell you that. They go to websites like Brian's Club, for example, will purchase credit card numbers. I don't believe this is a shock that people will face when they, when they go, again, for this limited amount scope that this ordinance has. Anybody that's been to Las Vegas and bought two bottles of water at a CVS or a Walgreens near the Vegas Strip, what do they do? They ask to see your ID. You can't make a purchase without, a credit card purchase, without having to show your ID. It's a store policy. I've heard millennials don't like to carry IDs and use apps to pay. I disagree on the ID part, but the apps are okay. In fact, if you look at some of those apps, they check, they have more checks and balances in there than what we're requiring in this ordinance. If anything, we'd be able to get an IP address if there was something to unfraud with one of those apps. Mandating a photo ID will disallow consumers without government identification from purchasing gift cards in Shakopee. I think that misstates the facts. Again, we're just talking about three specific gift cards. They can use cash, they can use check, so I don't think that there's a disparate treatment here. The proposed ordinance would disrupt standards some retailers have in place that create consistency for consumer, customers, no matter where they shop. I agree on that and understand. Again, I ask, are we really asking too much in this case? And I don't think that that's the case. I counted well over 70 gift cards in one store, okay? Different kinds, whether it's Applebee's, Red Lobster, you name it. We're talking about three that we're asking to be moved to the register. I also don't think it's unreasonable or uncommon that national chains have to adapt to local city ordinances. Look at the 21 and over now for tobacco purchases that some cities, for example, are having. Local retailers with tight margins for each and every sale, giving customers reason to go elsewhere for gift cards and other purchases that go with it can be problematic in today's competitive market. Again, I understand that from a business standpoint. Are people really going to drive to another city because they have to show their gift, they have to show an ID if they purchase with a credit card in Shakopee? And if they do, well, then that raises a whole other level of question. So I don't think that this is going to leave businesses as shorthanded, maybe, as some of the points suggest. In fact, there's a lot of businesses that are already starting, and I'm told to take these measures. $200,000 price tag to fix machines, that was a number that was given to us initially when we were asking them to actually retain the driver's license information. I have not, I've not heard that. Again, there's other stores and establishments that have moved cards already, and they seem to be doing fine, and people are still shopping in those stores, and I don't, I'm not sure why a $200 price tag to do that, where that comes from. The retailers accepting and selling gift cards are subject to the terms and conditions outlined in their contracts with providers. I've heard nothing specific on that in the last year. I will tell you that, again, verifying that the person who's purchasing, using their credit card to purchase is the actual person, has nothing to do with the credit card, the item that they're purchasing, in terms of establishing this ordinance. This is, this is about making sure that we're preventing fraud. Just pushing the problem to another city, this really doesn't solve the problem. I understand that, and we're first. Again, is that horrible to move that out? I know there's several other jurisdictions that are looking at us and watching to see what happens here. Will they follow suit? I don't know. It's going to depend if this is successful. We don't anticipate, again, this is going to stop all frauds. I think this is a good, a great compromise, again, from where we were to where we are now. This is an excellent compromise to at least see where we're at. And I will, I've told Bruce this several times, I'll say it again here publicly, we'll monitor this. And if in a year it's having no effect, or it's not working, I'm going to be the first one here, Mayor, to say, "You know what? This isn't working, let's repeal it." I'll be the first one to say that. But at the same time, it's too easy right now. It's taking up too much resources, it's affecting too many people in this community and surrounding communities. And I think it's, I think it's good public policy, frankly, to start moving down this road. I do ask that you approve ordinance number 02019-007, an ordinance adding a new section 130.21 to the Shakopee City Code regarding third-party gift cards. I do know that Ms. Brenda Arvidson would like to address the council, and then maybe I can come back for questions or anybody else.
Counselor here with you. Are there questions of Chief Tate? Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Tate, number three in the ordinance that's proposed says, "Requiring retail establishments to verify identification at the point of sale is an effective way to deter criminal behavior." Now, it doesn't say specifically that that's referring to the third-party credit card transaction with a credit card, although I'm old-school, I can't, I don't know why they don't check to make sure any credit card purchase, that the person using the credit card is actually the person that's supposed to have the credit card. And the only way to do that is to check an ID. So if, how did we get away from that in this society, where anybody could take any credit card and go make a purchase, and nobody questions it until you find out, you get your bill and find out somebody just bought something on your credit card that you didn't buy?
Mayor, members of council, we've become a society that really values speed and ease of transaction, and I've always, everybody knows me, knows I'm not a big technology person. I think technology's taken from us as much as it's given us. There's a lot of bad that comes with the good with technology, and these folks that commit these crimes oftentimes, they're steps ahead of us in terms of that. And, you know, I don't disagree with you. My brother, I probably should do this, but my brother puts on the back every credit card, asks for ID, see ID.
I do.
You know, and nobody ever asks them.
Correct. They don't. And it's sad, because when my credit card was used by somebody illegally, which is another point I wanted to ask you about, because that card was used and that credit card company, through the PD, and it was another agency in another part of the state, along with our agency, myself, and the credit card company, they wanted to leave that card open for use, not by myself, but by the criminal, so they could track it along and try to catch this person, which I thought was a great idea. Which I thought was a great idea. As long as I don't have to pay for all the bills that they're racking up. So, but under the third-party card, the way I'm understanding it, these are, you, you walk in, you buy some third-party credit cards, Visa, Master, Discover, or, uh, American Express, they don't have a name on them. You load five hundred bucks on it or something. And now that criminal element can take the proceeds of their crime and go have fun, and it's not traceable at all.
It's extremely difficult, yeah. And that's, and that's again why they target that specific.
They're turning it into transactional currency.
It's not, it's, it's just not traceable, because.
I go back, Councilman Lehman, to that, that point I made, that they favor these gift, gift cards because they can get quick cash, the transactions are largely irreversible, hard to stop. In fact, the money, like I said, it was, it transferred, uh, out of the country before I think our detective even, uh, knew about it. And it's, you can remain relatively anonymous, uh, with them. And they can be used anywhere in the, in the country or in the world.
Is, is the item number three in the proposed, uh, ordinance, is that requiring retail, retail establishments to verify identification at the point of sale, for any credit card transaction or just for the third party?
Just for these specific transactions and just when you use a credit card.
Okay. And then the last question I had was, oh, two actually. The, when you talked about the, uh, additional officer loaded cost, the one thing that doesn't get talked about a lot is the actual cost of the fraud itself. So I, I'm kind of at a loss to why both retailers and consumers wouldn't be supportive of minimizing fraud because the retailer actually takes a hit for the fraud in their processing fees. Maybe not per incident, but we all know that the processing fees go up, up, up the more the credit card companies lose, because somebody's gonna have to make up the losses. And the consumer makes it up in higher cost of goods that they're buying because, uh, and the cost of having the credit card, whether it's the interest charged by the credit card on the consumer or, or the fee to have one. So I'm kind of at a loss, and, and I am a little old school, I will admit it. When, you know, I remember when every tr- credit card transaction, you put a credit card out, they asked you for ID unless they knew you personally. And, and I don't know why that has gone away. Um, it's, it's a simple protection of both the, the retail and the consumer. And it's almost an expectation, especially when you put it, the credit card companies put it right on the card. Sign here, so they can verify your signature. And now we have these, you walk up, you just stick your card, and I could take Bill Reynolds's card with a million dollars on it, walk into Holiday and just shove it in a machine, nobody asks a question. And if you have to sign for it, you could just put a line across it and push okay, and you're good to go, unless it has a pin attached to it. And I, I think that's just a, you know, fraud is so rampant and not just, in the country in general. I just, bewildering to me that the only time we make endeavors is to make it easier. It doesn't make any sense to me. Well, it's like the common sense on this whole issue just went right out the window a few years back. It's frustrating, you know?
It is, and it's, it's frustrating for victims and, and for the police. And I wanna make very, very clear, I'm not trying to throw retail under the bus because they, they do, they do do great things to prevent this and, and, um, they've done a lot of measures, and since this, uh, we started talking about this a year ago. You already see it with some of the stores in town, you see it with, uh, a, a number of the bigger retailers limiting the amount that they're gonna let you load on, on gift cards, because they recognize that this is, this is a problem. This is a great conversation to have. I'm not naive, this is gonna cost them some money. Some of our businesses will not have as much money. But again, based on the conversation we had once this fall, what they said that they sold, this particular retailer, uh, both at the register and at, at the self-checkout, I started joking with my captain and, and our, and our detective afterwards. We thought, this is what we're haggling over here? It was not a lot of money, and if that's the case, what percentage of that is fraud then? Pretty high. And again, we're joking, but I said, heck, why don't we put that amount in the budget? We'll give it to that retailer and save us a whole hecka lot more on, in the work that we, that we do. But I, I think it, I don't wanna make it sound like retail doesn't care at all. Because Bruce and, and Angie and everybody wouldn't be up here and, and if they didn't care and, and nobody... But again, at, at some point here, um, I, I'm, I'm really struggling with why this is getting pushed back. Why, why is this too much to, to ask? Let's, let's see if this worked, and again, I'm the first one that'll be here admitting if it, if it didn't work or not.
Councilor Whiting?
No, I, I'd like to hear from the business community.
No other questions of Chief Tate?
I have one question. You had mentioned, um, that if this doesn't work in a year, you'll come back and rescind it and try to rescind it. How would you quantify it? How would you know if it's working or not?
Mayor, members of council, that, that is something we're just gonna have to really monitor in terms of how we code cases and whether, to see whether or not we're... I mean, we still may have an increase in fraud, but it's, it's a different scam or something like that. So we have to make sure that we're, uh, earmarking these types of cases when we do get them and, and looking back. It's gonna require a lot of work on our, our part, our record staff in particular, to make sure that we're, we're measuring things the way that they should be measured.
And I'll follow up with that. So I believe we have an ordinance allowing for interim ordinances. Would this apply to that, or?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the actual statute on interim ordinances only applies to zoning regulations. So that being said, uh, I mean, you could put an automatic repealer in this ordinance. I, I don't think that's what the chief is suggesting. No, I think what the chief is suggesting is he'll come back on his own initiative, and it's probably a better way to go.
Other questions of, uh, Chief Tate? If not, thank you.
Mayor, can I bring up, uh, Brenda right now?
Yeah.
If that's okay?
Welcome.
Uh, my name is Brenda Arvidson. I live on three oh five Stone Brook Court. Um, I got a call from my credit card company on March seventeenth asking if I was at Party City in Bloomington buying three hundred dollars worth of, I guess, St. Patrick's Day items, and I was not. I was actually in my car driving my daughter back to the airport to send her to college. Um, so they canceled the transaction and then started going back with me on the transactions that were, happened. And it turns out that there were thirteen transactions that had happened from March first to March seventeenth. All happening at two stores in Shakopee, Walgreens and Cub Foods. Um, I've since learned, I, um, called the police right away and learned that my card was cloned, and the majority of the purchases were gift cards. Or the, um, credit card, the Visa, MasterCard, that kind of thing. Thirty-four hundred dollars they spent in, in that time. I heard concerns about if, if we do this here, if we ask for ID, we're just pushing it to another community. My credit card called me the minute they went to another community. My credit card was able to detect that that's not a community that I'm usually in. But because it was in my home, they were unable to detect it in stores that pretty much anybody goes to, Cub and Walgreens. I've also heard, you know, if they can't do it in the stores, if they, if you, if they ask for ID and they go somewhere else, they're gonna take it online. Well, they didn't have my CVV code. And when you go online, you make a purchase with your credit card, you always have to include the CVV. They had the information skimmed, but they didn't have the CVV. So it kept them from going online, but not in the community. I don't know if they had stayed in the community how much longer it would've went on. Of course, this isn't a victimless crime. It cost me countless hours of phone calls, a little bit of embarrassment when my daughter's gymnastics called and said that my payment had been declined. I got about fifteen different calls of payments that had been declined, that I was not on top of. This all happened in my community, in a place where I feel like I should feel safe. When I go to Target and I buy fireworks, if I buy Sudafed, I have to pull out my ID. It doesn't take any time, it doesn't bother me. I have been asked on occasion for my ID because my credit card is used so much that the name is off the back. And I'm impressed by that. I'm not annoyed by that. As a consumer, I appreciate that the retailer is looking out for me. I urge you to pass this ordinance. I think this is a one-stop. If, if, if this, if this criminal could've been stopped with one transaction instead of fourteen, I mean, think of the costs that we save. And we know that, I didn't actually realize that the retailers didn't take the, don't get charged back for the... You know, I got, I got my charges credited back to me. I thought they took them from the retailers, but they don't. Your credit card covers that charge, which means your fees go up, your interest rates go up. It affects us all.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, uh, ma'am, you make a very good point, two good points, actually. The first one that I picked up on was that the purchases made in a different community with your card from Shakopee, now we have Bloomington, was it? Bloomington investigating and Shakopee investigating. So it's not just our cost on that one criminal, it's also other jurisdictions' cost. And all of these costs will add up, and this is just one case. How many other cases are there that bounce around between multiple communities? And it's three, four, or five different communities investigating purchases within their jurisdiction, all combined into one big case? It's just ridiculous. When the retailers aren't charged back or the consumer's not charged back, you're not, you're not being charged back because you've done nothing wrong, same with the retailers. But we as a society are getting charged back. It's raising the cost of, of the processing, the cost that the credit card companies put out on the end users, be it the merchandise, uh, the merchants and, and their processing fees, or the consumer and their cost to have that card or the interest they're paying, you know, them types of things. So business, the credit card companies aren't gonna absorb it themselves. They're, they're gonna collect it somehow.
Right.
Thank you for sharing your story. I know as a credit victim, that I've known many, that the, your effort has to, is a hundred times more than that of the crime, the person that did the crime, because it only takes him ten minutes. But you, to unwind it all, takes a hundred times that effort.
Still unwinding it.
Yeah, right. Thank you. So, um, I know there's association folks that would like to come and speak on this ordinance proposal. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a handout, I'm not sure what the protocol to give that to you is.
You can just hand it to me and I'll take it, and we'll have one for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to appear today to talk about this issue. And I just wanna start out by thanking the, the chief. We've had a good dialogue with the chief relating to this issue for, as he mentioned, probably just under a year. Uh, we've had an opportunity to react to several of the chief's drafts on this issue, and that's, I think, been important for retailers. I think we stand at a difference of opinion today, and we'd actually ask the council to either table or vote down the chief's proposal. Not because we don't believe in what the outcome of the proposal that's trying to be sought is, uh, but we think there's probably some different things to try before we get to this point. So if you'll indulge me, I'd like to talk just a little bit about what we've seen in the retail community on this issue over the past year and lay out some suggestions that we might have in looking at this issue. So, uh, the chief's conversation with us has yielded some efforts on the part of retailers. Uh, they have been individual store efforts. We know there are Shakopee retailers that have actually moved cards, as the chief has suggested, when they've deemed that important in their environment. We know there are retailers that have done some training and retraining of store personnel to flag some of these issues. We actually know of a retailer who has put in some, um, some caps on purchases per the chief's suggestion to help rein in some of this fraudulent-type activity or illegal activity purchasing these cards. So we are actually seeing retailers step up and doing things beyond what they do normally. And, and I will say, uh, thank you to the chief for the compliment, retailers do care about this issue. I don't want anybody on the council to think that retailers don't care about fraud or what happens to consumers. What happens to consumers is paramountally important to retailers, and we take our, uh, role in this very, very seriously. What our concern is that, uh, we've had a great opportunity to react to the chief's ideas over the last year. We think those have put some ideas out there where we, as an industry, could come forward and actually lead a broader conversation among retailers and retailers here in Shakopee, large, medium, and small, by the way, because the criminals are smart. And when they can't find one outlet, they find another. So we think there's an opportunity here to actually have a broader conversation with retailers about what might be best practices. And we have some great leaders in the best practice area, and we'd love the opportunity to work in partnership with the city and in partnership with the chief to develop some of those ideas. And as the chief suggested, we agree, let's give some of those ideas a year or so to try. Uh, I just, I thank the chief for his acknowledgement in his report that the conversation has yielded some results already. And I think as an industry, we'd love to have the opportunity to continue that conversation, put an action plan in place, evaluate that over the course of time. And quite frankly, if that doesn't work, then it's the time to look at other things. So, uh, there's a strong preference among retailers to have the council say, hey, you know, why don't you guys figure out what you can do? And then if you can't do it, then we're gonna tell you what to do. Uh, but it just doesn't feel like we're at the point right now where the council should say, we're gonna tell you to do this, we feel like we're at a good point. And working with the chief and others where we could say, here are some options, let's try these and see if we, uh, move the bar from that perspective. And if not, we understand there's, there's other ways to do things. So that would be our, um, our request today. I wanna real briefly, if you'll indulge me, Mr. Mayor, just go through the handout, um, that I put together. And I only go through it because I wanna make sure there's a clear understanding of fraud and what fraud looks like, and what this ordinance would do and what this ordinance would not do. And actually, I think the chief has a pretty good understanding, he's been pretty upfront about that, but I just wanna make sure it's, it's laser sharp. Uh, one thing this does not do is prevent a Shakopee resident's credit card from being stolen. The two pieces in this ordinance simply do not do anything to prevent that. So I would not want your citizens to think that passing this ordinance tonight is gonna reduce the theft of, uh, you know, their opportunity or have them be lax because they think this is gonna make a difference in that. It simply will not.
One minute.
Mr. Mayor, can we get this on the document camera, please?
Okay, we will.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have one that?
Yeah, I have a fresh one for you.
This gives it a chance for the people at home to see what's.
Mr. Reynolds?
So sir, it's safe to say, but that's not what this ordinance is designed for.
Correct. Well, correct. But I wanna be clear, I think, in, in some of my conversations with folks, I think there's the perception that what this ordinance does is protect your neighbor from getting their credit card stolen. And that, I just wanna be clear that everyone understands that that is not an outcome of this proposal.
Okay.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I thought the, what we're trying to accomplish here was make it a speed bump for the criminal to actually use illegally somebody's credit card to purchase something that shelters them even further.
Good evening, Councilmember Lehman. I don't, I don't dispute that. I just wanna make sure everybody has a clear understanding of the zone that this ordinance plays in, as opposed to maybe some perceptions surrounding that. Secondly, there, um, I know there may be some dispute about this, but there is nothing today that prevents a stolen Shakopee resident's credit card from being used to purchase online, third-party gift cards online. I know there are different models out there, some retailers do require the three-digit, uh, code on the back, some do not. So there is nothing really that, in this ordinance, that prevents that. So I wanna make sure that's, that's known. And there's nothing in this ordinance that prevents, from a fraud perspective, somebody using a resident's card to buy other high-value items that are not gift cards. As you know, this is specifically limited to gift cards, but it doesn't impact vacuum cleaners or toasters or gaming systems or TVs or anything like that.
Criminals don't wanna buy vacuum cleaners. They wanna buy, turn it into, uh, currency.
Send the toasters to Cuba.
And you're actually making great arguments for how limited this particular ordinance is.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, I, I, um, I would say, you know, we work a lot in organized retail crime. A vacuum cleaner is a high-value item. That is, laundry detergent is a high-value, diapers are high-value items that are stolen. So there, there is an outlet for many, many things beyond third-party gift cards.
Continue. Continue.
Also, as was acknowledged, criminals are sophisticated, and there's nothing in this ordinance that would prevent a criminal from using a fake ID or using a card that corresponds to the name on their ID. A cloned card could have any name put on it, as an example. I'm not trying to give any criminal's ideas, but that is the level of sophistication of some of these rings that we see.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, but it does require an extra step for the criminal to actually either steal that ID or to produce a fake ID.
Or, Mr. City Administrator, to produce a cloned card with a name that matches their ID.
Fair enough. Again, that's another step that the criminal will have to take, that currently is not required.
Well, you know, I'll go a step further, this is exactly what proves the point, that what we're trying to do is target it to a specific criminal element, if you will, the ones that are willing to do the extra criminal activities to be sheltered by untraceable third-party cards. Now, I'll go back to your point number two, prevents a Shakopee resident's stolen card from being used to purchase third-party gift cards online. That's if they have it in their hand and have the three-digit code on the back. Now, the other point we were missing in that comment is that if they're going to go online, now they have a traceable IP address, time, location, what was purchased, from where, how much, and you actually have something for law enforcement to investigate, instead of chasing down a handful of 50 preloaded cards with nothing on them, no name, no nothing, that they could use anywhere and not be traced.
And, Councilmember, on that, I can appreciate that. Not all online systems will require that three digits, so as a matter of fact, if you opened up a credit card processing account today, and I feel like we're getting in the weeds away from the, kind of, the conceptual idea, but there are different levels of verification in a transaction. You can choose to accept a transaction that does not have that three digits. So, I just, I point that out, that this does not close that loop entirely. Just like, there's a verified address or there's an unverified address, again, those are different levels of authentication, and with it come different levels of risk for the retailer when they use those as well.
Continue.
And then, again, just back to the point of what this does not do is it doesn't encourage retailers to work with the city in a partnership. Again, that is not a threat in any way, shape, manner, form, that is basic human nature. You tell somebody what to do, as opposed to telling them, asking them how to solve a problem with you, you're going to get different reactions, so I think that's important for the council to know.
Mr. Mayor, can you help me with one concept?
Absolutely.
Why wouldn't retailers want to do this to protect their customers? If I'm a customer, and I recognize that you have this in place, I'm, three of us right now, that I'm aware of, up on this dais have had credit card fraud, and I don't know who else has, but I certainly have as well. Why wouldn't you come out in the forefront and say, you know what we're going to do? We're going to protect our customers, and then market that, and then suddenly you have an opportunity that no one else has, and people are going to feel more comfortable shopping in your store?
And, Mr. City Administrator, some retailers do that, that is a matter of choice. And quite frankly, it's also a matter of the contract that exists between them and their process, pardon me, and their card merchant processor, so.
So, okay, help me understand how asking for an ID is somehow going to affect the agreement that a retailer has with their credit card company?
So, if you look at contracts that exist, contracts are fairly specific, there is a reason why, I'm going to be very polite about this, there's a reason why we don't have chip and PIN mandated today, and that is because there's a layer of the system that says, you know what, let's not inconvenience a consumer to have, to provide a PIN. So, while that is partially a retail issue, what the retailer's policy is, there are also obligations that exist between retailers and those upstream. So, it is not just as simple as saying, well, you can do this behavior but not this behavior. Those behaviors have to be looked at in terms of what is contractually allowed or allowed in the agreement.
So, are you saying that the act of asking for an ID in this situation will somehow violate a contract between a retailer and a credit card company?
I'm saying that could exist in a contract. I don't have any contracts that I'm holding up in front of you today. I know because we process credit card transactions at the association, we do not have that control in place, but I do know that there are some specific controls in place, but I couldn't tell you how many for sure.
And how would a retailer then, I would think that a retailer would say that if under law, much like if I'm going to buy alcohol, the retailer has to ask me for my ID to verify that I'm over 21 years old. I would think that if that's the case, then the opportunity would be there for the retailer to say, well, this is a law now, we must follow it. I'm not aware of any contract that says you can't follow the law under contract.
Not a contract attorney, so I couldn't venture into that zone, I just know that there are agreements that exist that would have to be looked at, should this pass.
Continue, Mr. Newsted.
Thank you. And then, finally, just in this top section, and I think you've been gracious at acknowledging this, but I want to be sure you understand that there is a victim here, and let's make sure we're not just moving, kind of, who's responsible around who gets caught up in this. I think it's important and vital to take a look at who's the victim and who's the criminal, and how do we address those points? Are there things that retailers can do? Absolutely. Is it a good time for that conversation in Shakopee? Absolutely. But this ordinance sort of creates the impression, and maybe the chief dispelled that, but that the retailer is doing something wrong and bad, and I don't want that to exist today before the council. Now, a couple of quick bullet points. I think the chief acknowledged that this does in some ways kick the can down the road to other cities, I think he acknowledged that that's all right with him. I think that's frustrating to us, because if we're going to be part of a solution, it should be a part of a solution that actually has the opportunity to make some change and do things that are important across the board. We certainly would much prefer to see a "you must" done at a, I hesitate to use the word higher level of government, a different level of government, such as the state, as an example, because that does allow, as the chief had mentioned in his rebuttal to our letter, retailers to do things in a much more uniform way, in a way that customers expect, et cetera. I won't go through all these things, but I do want to mention one item on here that I think is important, and I know, I get the sense that everybody here today is comfortable providing their ID in a number of decent facets, including for a purchase. I will just tell you that not all consumers are, and you and I may be very comfortable with that, but for whatever reasons, there are other consumers that are not, and we should be cognizant of that as well.
And they will always have the option to use cash to buy a gift card.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Newsted, in trying to determine a new ordinance within a community and trying to move the dial, we're talking about victims or impacts, you know, many, many years, and you represent the retailers.
Correct.
Of all sizes, of all, so, many, many years ago, there were some magazines that there was a big push to put a brown wrapper over the cover, and then a push to put it behind the counter, and you had to be of certain age to buy those. Did you push back on that issue, that I needed an ID to buy one of those magazines?
Great question, that specific issue would have been slightly before my time with the retailers, but I will say, you can translate that into probably a number of other issues, and it's a legitimate question.
Right. And then, my other question is, about 10 years ago, there was a, well, it's still happening, but there was a big explosion of meth and meth labs, and there was a common over-the-counter drug, Sudafed was one of the major ones. I think you can go in today and buy one package with no ID, but that won't do you very good, you need copious amounts of packages to make that illegal product, but, and now you would have to show your ID for that. Did your organization push back on that opportunity to move the dial on trying to do a public good?
No, great question, again, slightly before my time, but, in that specific example, I know, I think we saw that at a federal or a state level, which would be much more preferred, and again, for the same idea, let's, if it's worth doing, let's do it at a macro level where you can kind of move the needle as opposed to moving things around. Legitimate question, though, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
No, no, I just feel like this is a win-win thing for actually all parties that are involved. I think fraud is a big issue, credit card fraud. I work for Target Corporation, they work very hard at pushing down fraud, limit the amount of gift cards that they can sell on a thing, but we in Shakopee are unique, I think, because it's an entertainment destination, and upwards of 10 million people come to our community every year for our four major entertainment venues. That creates opportunity, and opportunity, and not all those folks are law-abiding, and then now, we have our police department saying, boy, we've had an explosion in fraud, we've seen the chart where fraud has increased, and trying to do something about it here, and that's kind of the stuff that we're looking at today. Counselor Lehman?
Couple of points, Mayor. In my travels, you know, when I'm outside my normal area of being, I go into these shops or stores or businesses, and I notice signs that say, no out-of-town checks accepted. You got to wonder, why is that? They don't want to chase it down, and I'm waiting for the sign below it to say, credit cards will be verified with ID, and I'm surprised that the credit, and I'm not blaming the retailers, because, you know, I get the uniformity argument, however, if we're going to talk about uniformity, let's talk about sign ordinances.
Okay.
Okay? Because there's just none. But I'm amazed that the credit card industry has allowed this, along with the retail industry leaders like yourself, who haven't taken the opportunity long before where we're at now, and I don't mean the city, I mean our society with billions of dollars of fraud. They seem to always go the other direction to make it easier and easier and easier, and it makes no sense to me, and I'm looking for an answer. You're in charge of retail, what's the answer? Why does everybody want to make it easier to commit fraud?
Is that an actual question for me?
That's an actual question. I mean, how long have you been doing your job?
Six, coming up on seven years.
Okay.
And I will say.
How many proposals have you made on behalf of the retail organizations to stifle fraud?
I have seen dozens and dozens of efforts on the part of retailers to work, from chip and PIN, up to caps on transactions, to moving cards, to predictive systems, you know, smart analytics systems. I've seen a lot of things. If you're asking me personally, have I led any of those initiatives? I have not. But I have seen an industry, and work in an industry that cares deeply about this issue, and organization by organization has done things to address it and limit things from their perspective.
Well, and see it from my perspective, I came from having a credit card that every time I purchased anything, I was required to show an ID that matched the person on the card, to now I can put it in just about anything, and nobody says boo. Whether it's a gas pump, or stick it in at the cash register, and just put an X on the box, and we're good to go. Sometimes you just put your fingerprint on there, push the green button, and you're good to go, and you didn't even sign it. I mean, you don't have to sign, you don't have to do nothing. And then we wonder why we're in the state we're in, as a society, not just, you know, I'm not hitting the retailers or anybody, but in general, it's just really disheartening that nobody wants to do anything about it.
Counselor waiting.
Thank you. Mr. Newsted, a couple of things. I want to push back a little bit, but then I have a question for you. You had talked about some of these, you'd rather see that something like this started at a higher level, and my pushback is, I think a lot of these new laws and things are created at a smaller level and grow out, and I think you've seen that on several different laws, and most recently, you know, we've seen it with smoking, you know, the marijuana laws out throughout the country, bad example, but they're changing the way, at a broader level, they take a little more bite in other states, in other cities, and they grow. You're seeing it with the, raising the smoking age is what I meant, to 21 from where it has been at 18. The question I have is, in one of your letters you wrote, you said something about offering some training to local retailers. And I want to flesh that out a little bit, see if there's an opportunity for a public-private partnership here.
So, yeah, thank you, Councilmember. So, in that area, I mean, here's the great thing, you've got a very captive group of retailers whose attention you have gained. The chief has done a great job at that. I'm fortunate to work with retailers that tend to do business relative to you, in other communities as well, so we bring a certain perspective to this. I think the chamber has folks that they work locally, that have an opportunity to bring people to the table. So, in the area of public-private partnership, I think sometimes city councils hear those words on the part of organizations that just want to get out of doing something. That is not the case here. I mean, this is a case where we've had a great conversation with the chief for a year. You've not seen one single letter to the editor saying, this is absurd, don't do this. We've had a conversation, and there is a true opportunity to continue that conversation. And again, if that conversation doesn't work, and what that looks like, I mean, if you had to ask me for my vision today, I'd say, the next thing we do is we get all retailers together, we map out the problem, we say, what are we going to do about it, and we work with the police department in mapping out those solutions that we can try for a period of time. So, I just want to differentiate, because I do think sometimes you hear a little bit of disingenuous, we want to work with you. This is not a disingenuous, we want to work with you. This is a, you know, there's an opportunity to look at some options, let's see what we can do together, and if that doesn't work, then let's see what you can do.
So, seems like this impact here in Shakopee, but really it's about a fraudulent transaction carried out by a retailer, of which you're associated, right? To sell someone else's product, and only three products in any store, the three products we're talking to. I've been told that those volumes aren't great, but also the profit margins on that, those three widgets, for an impact on a retailer, has got to be miniscule. I know if I buy a Visa MasterCard or Visa gift card at $300, I know as a retailer, I don't think I'm getting $100 of that in profit. I believe that is a very small percentage, so we're not looking at a impact that would, a profit, real profit center for a retailer, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, my thought on that would be, today's retailer is working really hard to get consumers, doesn't matter if you're a small local shop or a national brand, you're working hard to compete, and if the presence of offering a gift card and a third-party gift card helps somebody come in the door, even if you don't make a ton of money off it, even if you don't sell a lot of them, is an important part of your plan. So, I would just caution us in sort of dismissing the value of any product, quite frankly, and trust that our retailers kind of know their business, but I, you know, to your question, I've never been told this is a huge moneymaker, but I have been told it's an important part of the mix, which is why you see so many, not only just third-party gift cards, but other gift cards in many places.
No, I mean, I remember the old gas stations where they just had, you know, they didn't sell anything, and just the gas, and they always said gas was a thin-margin business, going to sell 20,000 gallons a week or something, but now, you know, they want you to come in the store, right? So, you can buy a couple of pops and a candy bar and et cetera. So, but those are profit, larger profits, and I'm not trying to minimize that, but I just think as a retailer on a third-party item, the profit margin's not a great deal, but a convenience factor.
If I can expand on that a little bit, so, if it's not such a big profit margin, is the cost to the retailers and the retraining and the moving of these items and the logistics of the proposed change?
I think it'll depend on the retailer, so I work with retailers that say, okay, logistically, if we're going to have to do something that we just do in Shakopee, that's going to require a Shakopee exception to our point-of-sale system and our training, as an example. But that is really going to vary based on retail. You could have a local retailer that could maybe make the change with very little effort, but be concerned about missing the incidental sale that they might have on that, but it's really, it's a great question, Councilmember, it's really going to, the operational impact is going to vary greatly based on the retailer and their model and their system, and.
Mr. Reynolds, can you help me understand asking for an ID, and then having that ID presented, and looking at the ID and verifying that it matches a credit card? What training is involved in that that doesn't currently occur?
So, I'll just give you one conceptual example that I have that I think maybe illustrates it. It sounds simple, and the act, physical act thereof, is simple. It sounds simple, and the act, physical act thereof is simple. But sometimes there is some of the behind-the-scenes work. So as an example, a point-of-sale system would want to flag that. So the clerk says, okay, I need to ask for an ID. Then, you know, we actually need to become experts in IDs, believe it or not. We don't want you just to present yours as somebody, your Y membership.
But you currently do have systems where you have to present an ID, so that's really not true. You already look at IDs.
That is not entirely universal. So if you sell a pharmacy product where it's required by law, yes. But that's why you are always paying for your, those products at the pharmacy, not at the front. If you sell a tobacco product, you're going to go to a special lane for tobacco products, as an example. So again, you know, largely, these things can be done technologically. And again, I don't dispute that it can be done, but I think there's an element of, does it make sense and is that the right solution right now?
Other questions? Counselor Brennan?
I believe that the ordinance really is addressing the criminal activity as the issue and not the retailer as the issue. And I think that this is so narrowly focused that it's not going to address all fraud, but it's doing something. And we're here to protect Shakopee and the residents of Shakopee. And I think that this is really going to do it. So I would like to move forward with the, if there's no one else.
More questions of Mr. Newsted? Counselor Lehman?
Well, my solution that I pointed out early on, if you require ID or verification of everybody that uses a credit card for any purchase, fixes every one of your bullet points, which is where we were years ago.
Another ordinance for another day.
Well, that's where we were when credit cards started.
Used to be.
So I only have one other question on this ordinance, and that's the enforcement aspects.
Well, that's a, we'll have, if you, that's more for staff. Okay. More questions of Mr. Newsted? If not, I value that you were at the table. I value the dialogue that we've had. I do appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the conversation with Chief Tate, as do retailers, and deeply appreciate the opportunity to actually have a very forward conversation this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? The chamber or the, I guess I did receive, I apologize if I, the IPA Association? Chief Tate, then, if no one else is going to speak on that. Couple of follow-up questions for you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, the clause F enforcement violation, it states a violation of this section is subject to the penalty provisions contained in 130.99. Well, in reading 130.99, it's not, it's, well, it's not clear. It's gray and capricious on what the actual penalty is for any city code for a violation, because it says it could either be a petty misdemeanor up to, I think it was a $300 fine, or it could be a misdemeanor, up to 90 days in jail and/or $2,000 fine, I believe it said. And it seemed to leave that at the discretion of the city. And I disagree with laws being able, punishments being able to be dished out differently to the same violations.
Value of the crime, I think.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, maybe I can help a little bit on that. What that ordinance says is it's a misdemeanor, but at the discretion, it can be prosecuted as a petty misdemeanor. Prosecutors get that sort of discretion all the time. Can they exercise it arbitrarily? No. But in a situation like this, one example where they might choose to do a petty misdemeanor, if it's a small amount on the credit card, if it's a large amount, they might choose it as a misdemeanor. So it's not, when it says city in that context, it means the prosecutor. The prosecutor who is prosecuting the crime has the discretion to reduce it to something below a misdemeanor. That's not an unusual provision, giving prosecutors the authority to either charge it a lesser, a lesser crime or after it's charged, to reduce it to a lesser crime. I understand the question, but if a prosecutor acted...
I wish I could understand the answer, because if I looked at it from, but let's say you take an overheight grass citation, because you didn't mow your grass or something. Okay? Is that going to be handled as a petty misdemeanor or a misdemeanor?
I'd have to look, Mr. Mayor. I have to look at the code to see if it specifically says what that is for. But I'm sure that's probably just a citation and a petty misdemeanor.
So I, what...
Mr. Reynolds?
I'm just confused on that, and it's something I want to look deeper into with staff.
Yeah, and as a former prosecutor, I can kind of address some of those issues. Essentially, when you're looking to prosecute a crime, you're looking at the facts behind that. So there are a lot of mitigating facts, or there are a lot of extenuating facts based upon a certain crime. Now, this is misdemeanor, petty misdemeanor is different, but I used to deal with rapes and murders, for example. And so an extenuating circumstance is with, you know, with some kind of a malice, for example, underage, or there was a pre-existing condition, or it was lying in wait to murder somebody. So with this type of a situation, the prosecutor, and understand that back when this particular ordinance was enacted, the city actually had our own prosecutors, which we don't anymore. We now have the county that does a prosecution for us. So when you look at this, it's basically giving that prosecutor the ability to look at the extenuating circumstances and determining then, well, you know, this was, this was a small amount, it was a new employee, had a great record prior to that, you know, we'll look at that and this will be a petty misdemeanor. Or this is the third time that this single person has done this, and therefore, we are going to go ahead and produce that or prosecute that as a regular misdemeanor.
Chief Tate?
I would just point out that our alcohol compliance ordinance specifically points out first offense, second offense, third offense, fourth offense.
Comment on this?
I have nothing more to elaborate, Mayor, than what the council and city administrator have said.
More questions of Chief Tate? Being none, thank you. Does the chamber want to comment on this? All right. How do we want to proceed? Counselor Brennan?
Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation, or I would like to recommend, I would like to move council to adopt ordinance number 2019-007, an ordinance regarding third-party gift card procurement.
Okay. I have a motion. And a second by Counselor Lehman. Discussion, Counselor Whiting?
I would like to offer an amendment. If it's willing, I would like to see a one-year sunset, sunrise date on this to bring back data, have the police department earmark the data on these crimes currently and as affected by this ordinance, and then bring it back within 12 months to revisit this.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I totally understand where Counselor Whiting is coming from, but I would much rather prefer we take a separate action directing staff to bring us back on a six-month interview, interval, an update status report on how this process is working, if it's working.
I'd like to see the ability to close this, if it isn't changing anything.
Council can do that at any time.
Counselor Whiting, I appreciate your effort here, but I'm not hearing any friendly amendment to the motion maker of the second on a one-year sunset.
Would the motion maker be willing to look at a six-month sunset, a six-month revisit of this?
I don't, I don't...
Mr. Mayor, what's before you as an ordinance? So I think you're really talking about a separate action after this. This is the ordinance, and you could put in an automatic repealer that repeals it, but that's, you can't really condition the repeal and other things. So if we're not going to put an automatic repealer that says it's repealed after a year or 12 months, I think a better approach is to direct staff to come back with a report at whatever timeframe the council thinks is appropriate.
All right. So I have a motion, a second. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, and I just want to be clear with the legal, that there's nothing that stops this council or any future council from coming forward and saying, we'd like to repeal ordinance, blah, blah, blah.
And hear some data.
And there's nothing that stops that action.
Counselor Whiting?
Other than five voting members.
No, I agree that this is an issue that is of concern. Our chief, you know, is that, wants to do that proactive policing. And I think there is an opportunity for a public-private partnership here. It doesn't look like we're going to be moving in that direction. I understand that establishments have the opportunity, they're checking IDs all the time for different things. Suda-Fed was brought up, smoking, alcohol, various things. So I understand that. The concern I have is that this is creating another burden for our retail establishments. And what, and I'm not afraid of upsetting a precedence, we've done that on a regular basis. I'm a little bit concerned that it draws a lawsuit, but we can cross that bridge when we come to it. But I really haven't seen the pushback, the data from the retailers that tells me that, you know, this is the wrong way to go either. So I understand where we're going with it, but I'd prefer the more of the public-private partnership angle and offer, at least get the training that they've offered.
Counselor Lehman?
You know, when I look at this, first thing I think about when I read this was, how many people walk into a retail establishment and buy a handful of preloaded third-party cards? Let's see, how many people really walk in and buy $1,000 worth of...
Evidently, it's happening.
Okay? I'm telling you, doesn't that, like, raise a flag with you? To me, it's like, who would just walk in and buy $1,000 worth of third-party cards? I can understand walking in and buying a couple hundred bucks worth of Target or...
With Brenda's credit card.
Target or Fleet Farm or something specific and handing them out to family for Christmas or something, I get it. I just, to me, it's a red flag. Somebody's just going to walk in and do this, and that should be just like, okay, why are they doing this? I think, like I said earlier, I think all credit card purchases, they should be making sure the person using the card actually owns the card.
Counselor Brennan?
I believe that this is a catalyst to open conversations with the retailers. I think this is the start of it. I think instead of closing a door, I think it's opening a door. You know, if the retailers come up with something better and they work with the police department and they work with the city, come back and present it to us. We're not saying, oh, don't talk to us anymore. So I think this is a great step forward, and that's why I'm supporting it.
I totally agree with Counselor Brennan that, you know, this is a great opportunity to work together, as they have over the last year, by their own admission, working with the police department on what's before us and into the future on any other issues that might rise up, because trends do change. So...
Criminals change.
Well, I agree. I think that, you know, this is, we're an entertainment destination, we get a lot of visitors, it boosts our fraud situation. I'm surprised that the card issuers, the retailers, it should be a win-win to put down fraud. I mean, years ago, there was a company here locally called MoneyGram that was almost brought to its knees about untraceable money and turning it into currency, and yeah, that was sent out of the country. But again, if someone bought $1,000 or $2,000 worth of cashable gift cards of cash, that would raise a red flag. I think we've done a good job with the chip and pin. I think that if you're a credit card company, and I actually told Mr. Newsted this, I would try to promote the highest degree of security with my own card if I was an issuer. I don't see that today. How many years did it take chip and pin to come through America where we are? I mean, Europe had it for 20 years prior to that. I think this is a great thing. I do feel that we do represent the council, our community. And when there is a big impact to one of our public safeties, public service, which is lion's share of our budget, I feel we have to act on that in conjunction, hopefully, to try to move the needle on this issue that's affecting our community. And that's kind of how I feel, to reduce fraud, deter crime, help our citizens. But there is a motion and a second on the table, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Four to zero. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to bring back on a six-month basis, updated report on this specific topic on stats.
Second.
Okay, second. Discussion, do you think that's going to be enough time to draw some data? A quick, you know, a six-month snapshot versus, this has been impacting our community for a couple of years and growing. And then I'm wondering what the six-month picture would look like, but...
Mayor, members of council, at least a minimum of six months, I think. And from the time that the ordinance is actually effective and that, you know, we can again get, you know, we talked about training and so forth, you know, some of that's going to, you know, take place with us working with the retailers and the crime prevention specialists getting out there, again, kind of, you know, educating them about the ordinance. I mean, we've sent the owners and managers of these businesses, these drafts, but we want to make sure that that message is getting filtered down. So, you know, that'll take a month or so, but once that gets kicking, six months, yeah, we should be able to do something.
Chief, Mayor, Chief, I was thinking of yearly in the annual report, but I didn't want to break out the third-party issue in the annual report. So that's kind of what I was thinking on the six-month deal.
That shouldn't be something that's a problem, though, in, you know, maybe the physical annual report, Counselor, but where we wouldn't maybe put that in there, but like I'm going to do next, you know, when we talk about the annual report, you know, that would give us, you know, enough time certainly to have a snapshot.
All right.
I have a question to the motion maker. Do we want to make that six months from the time it's effective, so they have some time to collect the data previous?
Yes.
Okay.
Effective data, the ordinance?
And you know, if it's seven, that's fine, too. It's just the ballpark, kind of twice a year type thing.
Motion on the table for six-month review. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Moving ahead then. Chief Tate, good to see you. 9B2, Police Department Annual Report.
I suppose we take a quick break. I'll excuse you for a couple of minutes. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You pick.
What?
Can we take a short little break, or can I be back in a couple of minutes?
All right. Well, if you can find a second.
Motion to take a short break.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion to take a short break. Eight minutes and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? No, motion passes. We'll stand in recess for eight minutes.
We'll just take a second.
We'll be on a second slide in eight minutes. Yeah, no kidding.
The school portion up there.
Council waiting, that does require, that does take up the majority of the calls for service that are up there. But the way it's coded in terms of general locations like that, it's gonna, I believe encompass the whole mall. So if there's an accident in the parking lot.
My point is, we have the high school on there.
Right.
And I don't see it as the town square mall. I think it is, would be, you know, the Takata School. So I've just, it'd be nice if we could split that out, I'm just saying.
Ignore that. Top three crime comparisons, again, these have been the same now for probably the last four or five years. We've talked extensively about fraud. We did have, see a spike in vandalisms, about sixty more cases. A lot of that had to do with some tagging and some alleyways and vandalisms to vehicles. But I anticipate these three to be pretty much the top three for the significant future here. A couple of things here, DWI rest, you look in twenty eighteen, you know, that's half of what we did and, or less than half of what we did in two thousand eight. So that's a good sign that they're going down. I found out yesterday that we are no longer one of the thirteen deadliest counties in the state. We're number fourteen. What that does mean is that our towards zero death grant funding that'll be coming up later this summer will decrease. We won't have as many proactive DUI funded initiatives, but we will still get some grant dollars for that. The concerning thing for me, when I look at these DWI numbers, and it's, it's been like this now for three, four years. The average blood alcohol level of a person arrested in Shakopee is point one six nine. So we're arresting one hundred and fifty-one people, but the average, the average is, is double the legal limit. So there are a lot of things that have, whether it's our sober ride home campaign, Uber, Lyft, things that have, that have, I think, helped mitigate and prevent a lot of these. But the people that are getting behind the wheel, that, that number is still too high. That's, that's a scary driver if you're, if you're a one-six-nine on the road. The last one down there, if, when you see ordinance calls, you'll see that's increased seven, a little over seven percent. I think that's worth noting because we did hire a, our first ever ordinance specialist last year. He got on board almost a year ago. I think it was about a year ago. So just in that time, we were, we were behind until he got here in terms of ordinances. So when you look at when he's been able to do in just the short time he's increased that, I anticipate, much like the previous survey that started that position being talked about, wanted to see more code enforcement, more proactive work there. I anticipate that number to go up as well next year. We're gonna spend a little time on this slide. Normally, we don't. Normally, I, I kinda reiterate every year that we're, we don't get too high or too low on our crime rate because there's so much that we can't control and, and there's national trends and so forth. But after the last community survey, when we were looking, I believe it was sixty-four percent of residents, the feeling of safety that they had. I think this is worth talking about a little bit more. Last year was the fifth lowest crime rate in our city's history. As you see that, it was tied for fifth. I was telling, I was showing this to our Citizens Academy the other, the other week. And I said, I'm not cherry picking a date here. Look at nineteen ninety-eight. That's twenty years ago, okay? Obviously, the years before that, the number was even higher. In nineteen ninety-eight, we had half the population, half the police force. But if you look at the part one and part two crimes that were reported, these are actual reports, actual crimes. There were seven thousand forty-two more part one and part two crimes reported in nineteen ninety-eight than there were in Shakopee in twenty eighteen. And everybody's jaw just kinda looked and I, I made the comment and, you know, if the only place you get your news is, is a certain Facebook site, you would never believe that. And they all laughed, but it, it's true. And, and the perception that's out there, when you really compare the data, we forget how, how much crime there was in the nineties, especially the early to mid nineties. But we've come, we've come a long way. It's a different kind of crime we're dealing with, more mental health issues. Some of these take a lot longer to investigate, but seven thousand fewer reported crimes than, than we had twenty years ago.
With a quarter of the population.
Yes.
But I've never looked at it that way. That, that's actually a big percentage of the population back then compared to where it is today. That, interesting way you put it. Counselor Whiting?
Does that skew now that, because it is based on per hundred thousand people? So the more people we get, the changes, it flattens out that average, wouldn't it?
Counselor Whiting, in terms of crime rate, yes. In terms of actual reported crime, no.
So this chart is actual reported?
No, this is crime rate, but if you, it's, it's still relative because it, I have a, I didn't put it in a slide. But it shows the part one and part two crimes over the last twenty years, and you can see the decline. So even, even though the crime rate in the population, you know, is going down as the population went up, that's a significant number. And I remember starting in ninety-eight and we were, we were moving consistently. I mean, it was, I was shocked at how busy we were out here.
We should get this posted on some of our sites.
Well, and that's, that's why I want to talk about the slide a little bit. And the perception that came out with that sixty-four percent. I was not shocked when I saw that sixty-four percent, but I was certainly disappointed. I wasn't shocked because when those surveys went out, I know Bill and Nate heard me lament several occasions. It, it came out at a time when we just had thirty-two, thirty-three cars get their windows shot out. We had two homicides, different years. Those cases were settled. There was a, there was just a number of things that just right hook, left hook, it seemed like, that were out there. And I think it's important that we talk about, you know, some of the things maybe we haven't in the past when it comes to the perception. That played into it. Obviously, I think, I think the incident at Valley Fair this fall, the number of questions I got, and some of them were from left field. There's still people that think that machetes and guns and everything were thrown over the fence and, and people were stabbed. And, and that, even despite our press releases, that, that narrative is still out there. Now, it wasn't a minor event. And we've worked with Valley Fair on how we're gonna fix that this year. But when you do have venues like Canterbury and, and Valley Fair, you're gonna be on the news when something happens. That, that is a product of, of those places. They do a good job with their security. We've got great working relationships. But that's, we can expect if there's assault out there, an assault in the high school, which one are they gonna, gonna cover? They're gonna cover something like that. You know, and I'm certainly not whining about this, but we are covered differently by the newspaper. I get the savage pacer, somebody brings in the, the Prior Lake American at work, it's pure fluff. There's, and I've asked, you know, why is that? And it has to do with Twitter followers and, and just the way that this community responds. And, you know, I get weekly emails, I just heard this on the scanner, what's going on. No other agency in Scott County is getting that kind of attention. So we are covered differently. It's really happening most, for the most part, so they're covering what, what's going on. I'm not, again, crying about it, but at the same time, I think we have to understand that that's gonna play into a perception to some degree. Maybe not a large, but we have a paper that covers crime stories much more aggressively than they do in other communities.
Well, they, they think it's big news and it, you know, in some cases it is, but to put a bright light on it versus others in other communities where it's on page two or three or four. I wish this slide would be on the front page of the, of the local paper.
Well, Mayor, we're, we're working on that and, and Kristen and I have talked about that. And I, I believe there's gonna be some of this in the hometown messenger and there are, and I'll, I'll say it. We all know the Facebook site in, in town. There are people that'll say, don't confuse me with the facts. It's always gonna be doom and gloom. There's gonna be agitators that always wanna kinda create controversy and, and it's a bad place. We do need to push back with this kinda thing and, and the reaction I got at the Citizens Academy was incredible with, including another slide you're gonna see. But this is one of the, this was tweeted out, it would have been last week or the week before, we had a, we had a stabbing. And immediately, this is the narrative that goes out. And anytime there's, there's some kind of incident here, we, we start to see stuff like that and over and over and over again. And if you never respond to it, it, it does start to take a little bit of a hold. Now, this was an incident where a lady came home and found her sister in bed with her boyfriend. Not much a police department's gonna be able to do to, to, to stop that, but we did take her into custody. But I, I, I see this all the time and, and when something pops up that it, it is, the sky is falling. We're not crime free. I, I'm not gonna pretend that, but we're also not circling the drain. And I think, I think that's kinda some of the, this is another slide I think is very, very interesting. We didn't cherry pick these cities. These are the other, twelve other cities that the city compares to, whether it be for contract negotiations or, or tax rates and so forth. People can't believe when I say the last two, three years, did you know that Prior Lake has a higher crime rate than Shakopee? And I, no, that can't be right. Well, they do. But I, I don't think that, I think if you, you ask that question in the community, nobody, nobody's gonna, and we've had some, some press and we've put some things out in our annual report on our website. But when you look at this, we're right smack dab in the middle. And when you have the entertainment venues and the gaming venues that we have, I think we're doing pretty good. I'm not trying to throw my shoulder out, patting us on the back here, but when you look at the neighborhoods and everything that, that we see going on, for the most part, our streets and, and our neighborhoods are, are, are fairly safe. And I think this is actually a, a slide that, again, surprises a lot of people and I think you're gonna see it in some publications moving forward.
Well, one thing that caught me in that study was that on that crime, they were trying to take it right from your home and then kinda expand it. They felt safe in their home, they felt safe in their neighborhood, but then in Shakopee, that number dropped. And they, I found that unusual that, you know, maybe you feel safest in your home, but in your neighborhood.
Downtown, too.
Yep. And then, and then as you got that circle broader, then the, the number, number went down. And maybe that's a normal course of thinking, but I would think, hey, generally, we have a very, very safe town and, and, you know, and I'd feel safe in my neighborhood. I guess I just, that caught my eye.
And I, Mayor, I do, I do think, just real quickly, again, I think the Valley Fair incident last fall plays a big part in that. I, I mean, people still talk about that and still ask questions about that. That got a lot of, a lot of headlines. Again, it wasn't a, a minor thing. The last protest at Amazon garnered some, some media attention. And when you have those things, and, you know, it's, it's this way in probably most communities. Ten years ago, if you had your, your garage broken into and, you know, a bike was stolen or something, okay, you might not know, you know, the people down the block might not know, but now you're on a Facebook group that, that's gonna talk about that, a neighborhood Facebook group. And a lot of these cities don't have, you know, a concerned citizens group that has, what, over ten thousand, thousand people that are talking about that. I don't think that's a bad thing. We just gotta make sure that some of this information gets put out there as well.
Well, they only, it only speaks up when there's something and then they all latch onto that, you know, and, and not all the time very factual. But when there's nothing, then there's nothing, right? And then they won't talk about that. But Counselor Lehman?
I would point out the positives, too. There's always the negatives, but I recall a post floating around on that same site recently. Matter of fact, just this week or early last, late last week, about some woman, mini white minivan or something, tried to go after her daughter or something. So to me, that's good information because that's telling the community what to be watching for. Now, everybody's, it's almost like a larger neighborhood watch opportunity. So there are some good things that, that happen, but there are the bad, too. You gotta take the good with the bad. My question for you, Chief, is when, when we look at this chart, is the same crime rate decided on populations of a hundred thousand as the last one?
Yes.
Okay.
And these are, these are numbers, these are twenty seventeen, and I can tell you twenty eighteen, we had a lower crime rate than, than that. The state doesn't give, they give us all these numbers, so I won't have twenty eighteen numbers for everybody until end of June.
So can you explain how, if we take a city of seventy thousand and then they take a city of twenty thousand, are they all looking at it from a hundred thousand standpoint?
Counselor Lehman, you're, you're asking me to do Richfield High School math here. I'm gonna be a little, little off on this, but I know that everybody has calculated the same way. That's an even playing field so that the raiding bell plane is, is established the same way. It has to do, it's a formula based on part one, part two crimes, crimes that were mandated, mandated to report on a monthly basis. It's calculated. They calculate that all the same for every city. Some cities do it on their own because like us, we wanna see where we were, you know, right at the end of the year. I've got about half, maybe sixty percent of these cities that we looked into for twenty eighteen. We're gonna be right about the, the same, same area, it looks like. In terms of, you know, Savage slightly below us, Burnsville, all these other cities ahead of us. They just, some of these cities haven't gotten their numbers in yet.
So if, if we did it the other way, it would come out the same. So if we took a city of twenty thousand actual population and then took the actual number of part one and two crimes, divided it into the population and then did that with ours, it would still come out the same as this chart?
Oh, weighted, yeah.
Again, Counselor Lehman, I, I would, this is a number we get, I, I don't, we don't make that formula. It's a, it's a formula that they've used for years.
Big formula.
Yeah.
Crime per a hundred thousand is a national average.
Yeah, and it, and that's confusing.
But, but at least.
That's confusing, it's confusing, and we've gotten that question before. What's this per one hundred thousand number?
And then the second thing that would, would be awesome to see on here is some of these cities have like a whole lot of outside draw entertainment, Shakopee. And some have, some are kinda outlying, to be honest with you, Lakeville maybe. And that's not really reflected into anything, you know, without somebody actually telling somebody that, they wouldn't know that. So maybe, maybe the way, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, how many outsiders come through Shakopee on a yearly basis?
They say ten.
Ten million.
Okay, how many outsiders go through Lakeville in a year?
None of these are like an entertainment destination, you know.
Well, Roseville probably gets a lot of outside people traveling through on the highway.
Prior Lake, Mike.
Prior Lake gets a lot of outside folks at the casino. But I, you know, there's a disparity there that's not reflected in any reports.
And Mayor members of council, I would, you know, I've always talked about what makes us great, you know, this, all this entertainment. Also hurts us in terms of the crime rate and, and the visitors and so forth, but it makes us unique and it makes us a hard city to compare to. It really does. You know, kinda apples to apples to other cities. And that's why, you know, when you, when, again, you look at it, I, I bet ninety-eight percent of Shakopee would say, oh, we have a much higher crime rate than Prior Lake or some of these other cities. So part of it is, again, we're just, the visual aids, you know, showing people that, again, we're not crime free, we're not pretending to be. But we're also, we're doing okay. We're, you know, historically at, like most cities, at, at historic lows.
We're not doing okay. We're actually doing pretty good considering we amongst all of them have multiple outside influenced.
Well, I think you're, hopefully you have that chart here coming up.
I'm gonna be talking about that chart coming up real quick. And I do wanna address one thing, you know, Counselor Lehman, you talk about the good things on that site and some of the things that get posted. And I, I get the, the frustrating part, you know, I, I go back to, I wanna be a little careful here because it's dealt with a juvenile. But what we see a lot is, this happened to my daughter and, and, you know, it had to do with a sexual assault out on my, it never happened. You know, and we put, we try and put things out, but we have to be careful, too, especially when dealing with, with a juvenile. But the hardest part for us internally, and this gets really frustrating sometimes, is we know what the real story is and that's not often what's, what's told out there. And, and that can be, that can be difficult. And those, those threads are already, you know, circulating and replied and liked. Before we, you know, by the time we're alerted to them, it's difficult to respond in, in the proper context and, and put it, put it to bed. But we do monitor it. Kristen does a great job of letting me know if something's on that site that, that people are talking about, so. You know, when we talk about, are we doing a good job or not, this is always the slide that I look at the most. You go back to when the crime rates were high, those early two thousands, we had a case clearance rate in the thirty percent. I, that was a big thing for Dan Hughes was to, to, from a priority standpoint, is to, to get that case clearance rate above the, above the local average here. So we've consistently been above average. And again, I think our proactive policing unit's only gonna make, now that they're here for a year, is only gonna drive that forward. We get the twenty eighteen number again later in the summer. I'm guessing this is the slide we were gonna maybe talk about or you're referencing, Counselor Whiting. These are people, these are not formal complaints. These are people that actually went to jail. This is twenty nineteen data. We started collecting this in, in January. When you see there, a hundred and ninety-five out of the two hundred and eighty-three or so arrests, or sixty-eight point nine percent are, are non-residents. I know there's an article in the paper and, and it was dealt with at the county board level. In terms of percentages with Shakopee's entertainment and, and Prior Lake's entertainment, where sixty-three percent of felony and gross misdemeanors came from people outside Scott County. So we'll see. What, you know, we're gonna keep, keep our eye on this. We're gonna, it'd be real interesting to see what happens in the summer when these venues are, now that these venues are going and we're gonna have special events, if we see these numbers even, even get wider. It doesn't include formal complaints. It's a little harder for us to track on this. This is a real simple way. Did we take you to jail and where are you from, from the county?
Mr. Counselor Whiting?
Is there something we can do at some of these events and things to start sending that message that, you know, it, it doesn't pay to play that way in Shakopee? I mean, that would take some budgeting and I'm sure a conversation that we need to have, but I know you guys do a great job. But is, is that something that you see as something valuable now that we're looking at numbers like this?
Mayor, members of council, you know, these numbers have been, I remember when I first started on our booking, old booking forms that we, there was a question on there. Was this arrest related to Mystic Lake Casino? Yes or no? Well, cops just stopped filling the thing out. Nobody really kept track of it. So it's something we've been, it's always been kinda guessed and thought, you know, hey, look, this is, you know, we're not really arresting a lot of our own here. We're, we're dealing with a lot of outside influence and that's why, again, I think it's important to, to get several months of this data. Take a good look at it. In terms of what we're doing, you know, we're, we're really working hard with the promoter for the Canterbury concerts this summer. Making sure that's not just an alcohol event and, and he's been good to work with. Valley Fair, I do wanna speak, say one thing about Valley Fair. We've, I'm encouraged by their response. Even after the fact, last fall, we've been talking to advocates that are gonna come out on, on certain days and, and patrol with us and increase security. So some of the, some of that hopefully will be mitigated as well and we can tamper some of that down. So it's, I know there's other ideas that are out there, too.
Mr. Reynolds?
We, we really wanted to take a hard look at these numbers because ultimately, and, and this is a discussion that we'll be bringing back in the fall or later. Ultimately, the question is, who should pay for this? You know, are Shakopee taxpayers, are they the right venue? I, I've said before, there are other communities that have venues in them and, and, you know, there are agreements that have worked out, whether it's an increased, you know, quarter ticket price or whatever, or some other kind of agreements that, that try to address some of these issues. But yeah, so, you know, as, as we're tracking now, it's clear. And as Chief Tate had said, we're not even in summer yet. But it's already clear since January that what the trend is. Well over half of our crime are from people that aren't Shakopee residents. So we're asking our residents to pay for outsiders' criminal activity en- enforcement. So we have nothing concrete at this point, you know, we're still looking at things, but I hope to have that discussion later in the year.
I think that, you know, the impact and, and maybe there's a way we can have a public-private partnership agreement that, because you put this out last week and I, and I just, it really got, caught me and I went, you know, now I'm seeing the breakout and the impact. And while we love our entertainment destination spots, clearly, big impact here. I'm gonna have to go here because Counselor Lehman's been waiting.
Well, and Mr. Reynolds addressed part of my concern because when Counselor Whiting talked about, you know, about the budget for attacking this issue, no, no. If, if it's being caused from outside forces, this particular, particular venues, we need to come up with a way to not punish the law-abiding people for the criminal's actions. Absolutely support that. I don't know how you do that, whether it's a quarter, a ticket sale or whatever can be worked out. Even if something can't get worked out, at some point, you're gonna have to consider even an entertainment tax or something for the entertainment venue that actually causes the majority of these things. But I, I think you're right. We're at the beginning of this and we're gonna have to keep an eye on this trend and see where it goes. Because if it's, continues on this course, that's, that's unacceptable to me.
Counselor Whiting?
Well, my, what I wanted to get at is that we don't know that some of these numbers are from people that work in Shakopee. So we don't know it's all from the entertainment district, but we, I think we need to collect better data.
No, and we understand that and we're not saying that, but what we are saying that, you know, it's pretty clear the initial brush is, is, you know, there's a valid question here. Should Shakopee residents have to be paying for this activity? And, and again, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. We've got a lot of data to look at. We've got a lot of people to talk to. But we want you to know that it is something that's on our skyline at this point and something that we've been looking. And, and frankly, Chief Tate and I have been discussing certain aspects of this probably for at least two years, if not longer, which is part of why we wanted to kinda break things out.
Keep talking.
We saw the article from Scott County, too.
Right.
Where Scott County apparently looked into some of that data and that's where the.
Are they looking at our data?
That's where the entertainment connection comment came from. It's not from our data collected. It came from Scott County's data. That was in the paper.
Great slide. Thanks.
This is not such a great slide. This is the activity from the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force, I guess, depending on how you look at it. The numbers, the totals that you see there are in grams. I'll break it down by pounds, too. Heroin, you know, that's about one point one nine pounds of heroin. Why is that down a little bit? It's because you're seeing so much of the synthetics, the carfetanol, the fentanyl. It comes from China. It's readily available through the mail. One of the committees, the task forces that I'm on is the Violent Crime Coordinating Council. I actually enjoy being on that committee a lot and we look at a lot of this statewide. So this, these, these numbers are indicative of what you see in all drug task forces around, around the state. But I honestly think I'm at a point in my career where I'm gonna see us get to almost nothing in heroin because it's gonna be all the, the carfetanol, fentanyl, the easier stuff that they can get and the availability that that is through the mail. Methamphetamine, this is, this is scary. This is over forty-two pounds of meth. Again, this is indicative of what you're seeing in the whole state. The opiates, the heroin takes all the headlines, okay? And I should mention, we, you know, when it comes to opiates, we administered Narcan five times last year, all successful. Meth. We are a methamphetamine state. Back in two thousand and six-ish, when we had the, the meth spike and everybody had labs and Sudafed and all that stuff. You could get an ounce of meth for a thousand, eleven hundred bucks for an ounce. We are getting, seeing task forces now in this state and ours buying meth by the pound for thirty-five hundred dollars a pound.
Wow.
Okay, you, you can go to Mexico and get a pound of meth for two hundred and fifty bucks. I mean, it's, it's not, we're not seeing labs. We're not seeing any of that. It's all coming, coming straight up. straight up. And it's, it's really interesting when you, when you see how we disperse to other states too. But the North Metro in particular is where a lot of this comes in and then it's metered out. So, we're seeing a lot of meth and it's so cheap that this is, this is a significant problem and it's not getting talked about enough. Because again, and to some extent rightfully so, the heroin and the opiates have dominated a lot of headlines. But that is an awful lot of, lot of meth. The other numbers don't really surprise. Cocaine, it seems like that is either up or down. And right now, we're seeing a, a little more cocaine.
Chief, how come there's no fentanyl on this list?
Councilman Lehman, I have to go back through that summary of their annual report and, and look for that. This was directly a slide that was out there. I can look at more. We get quarterly reports from the task force and I should probably be feeding you guys those quarterly reports too.
If it's coming up from the south, maybe we're too far north. I, I don't know.
I just don't think he's got it on his data collection.
Most of your, most of your synthetics again are coming from China. Your meth is coming from the southern border. I wanna address a couple of things that you've seen in slides before. Again, I'm trying not to beat Darren with slides, so some of the medical information that you've seen in the past. The average response time for an emergency from Alina was seven minutes and 15 seconds. That's up from 7:05 last year, but Alina still maintains that's, that's below the national average. Their data's a little hard to sift through because they make so many runs in Shakopee from hospital to hospital. So, it looks like we have all these medicals, but we don't. And again, by far and away, the number one transport in the city of Shakopee for a medical is, is a mental health hold. Nothing else is even close. And we've done an awful lot to train our officers, have them be more proficient. I think that speaks volumes of the use of force reports and, and how little that has taken place. I think only seven had a presumed mental health or mental illness at the time any force was used at all. So, it's a very low percentage, but that's just the transports. That doesn't, you know, the other contacts that we get with somebody, whether they're, haven't taken their meds or, or so forth. So, mental health continues just to be a, a struggle for everyone in the business. It's, it's nothing unique to Shakopee. That's, that's everywhere. I wanna end on a good note. And again, you know, when we talk about perception and stuff, I don't get, get a, go a week without having somebody either bring in a donuts or a thank you card or, or something along that line. We appreciate being valued by this community more than they'll ever know. I put that award right there in the middle for a reason. And I think it's important, I never, I think, brought it actually here in front of you guys, but you as a council, I, that's a big deal. And you took a leap of faith in, in funding that position a few years ago. That's very, very unique to Minnesota. And right now, Barb Hedstrom is, is one of the lead people in terms of grants to help other departments throughout the state get a position like hers going. So, she is a, a source, a recognized expert in the field. And, and sometimes it's hard to keep her in Shakopee and we gotta, but she is, she's getting pulled in a lot of different directions. There is no other police department in the state of Minnesota that's received this award in the excellence in community policing. I don't think very many in the country have, and we're very, very proud of that. It's not an easy award to win. These aren't given out every year. You gotta actually earn them. And, and we're very proud of that. Next week, we've got several officers that are gonna be recognized by Mothers Against Drunk Driving for their work. So, we're very, very proud of our staff, the things they do. We appreciate your support more than you know. And I know you try and make every officer swearing in and, and that's, you know, whether it's night to night or those types of events, it's noticed and our officers appreciate it. And I certainly appreciate it. That's all I have.
Chief Tate, thank you. Are there any other questions of Chief Tate? I appreciate your report every year. I think it's of value and...
I did wanna hit on one. You did hit on mental health issues. Do we have any updates on the holding facility that they were talking about? Did that move forward?
Mayor, members of council, nothing I can, I guess I can say comfortably with any specifics to you right here. I do, we are glad to see that there are more resources coming. I know Scott County Board has, has made that one of their priorities and has moved some initiatives forward that way. The crisis intervention group, Scott County Crisis Intervention is, is helping and, and being more responsive. So, I think we're moving in the right direction on that. But in terms of the actual facilities, I would have to punt on that one. Sorry.
Not ready for primetime.
No.
Councilor Whiting, or Councilman Lehman, excuse me?
I'll ask the hard question. Why is mental health such an issue?
If I had that answer, Councilor Whiting, I'd make, or Councilman Lehman, I'd make a lot of money on the speaking circuit. I don't know. I, I remember when I started, I mean, there was all kinds of things. We, we dealt with acid. We dealt with different drugs and went through the meth, meth crisis. And we dealt with it a little bit. It's daily. It's daily. Whether it's somebody sleeping in their car, somebody that's not taking their medication. It's, you know, group homes are a significant resource, or resource that we have to devote to in responding to them. It's, I, that is the million dollar question that no one's been able to, to answer. I wish I, I knew what the, the cure was. And, you know, again, we train our people as best we can. We're not mental health experts. Yet we're kinda at the end of the conveyor belt. When, when everything goes wrong, we'll call a cop. And as the sheriff, the county, we know, law enforcement in general, we've really made strides to try and make sure that jail's not the biggest mental health facility in, in the county. It shouldn't be. We've got a ways to go on that and...
Can you take back to your department appreciation of at least as council member to all your, all of your members of your department for their service to this community?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I think this is one time Councilman Lehman can speak for all of us.
Mr. Reynolds?
I just add one thing to that, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I've had the opportunity to work with multiple counties, Sheriff's Department. I've had the opportunity to work with multiple city police departments. I can tell you, by far, this police department is the best trained. It is the most professional, most selective, which is incredibly important, police department that I've ever, or Sheriff's Department I've ever had the experience to work with. It is a phenomenal organization. It's something you all should be proud of. They have received, you know, I mean, Jeff kinda touches on it. They have received more awards and accolades than anyone else. And, and internationally have received two international awards. There's no one in Minnesota that's done that. No one. You have a resource here that, that is absolutely incredible. And a lot of that frankly is to thanks to you because it is an investment. During our union negotiations last year, we specifically worked on some issues in regards to education and, and, and training. And, and, you know, that was part of our budget because we wanted to make sure that our officers were the best trained and in the best shape they could be. And so, we gave them incentives to do that, which, which is not, you know, something that's normally done across the board. So, you have a lot to be proud of in regards to this department. It has a lot to do with the, the leadership of it as well frankly. And, you know, I can't say enough about it. And I, I publicly say that all the time. They're exceptional, exceptional organization.
We equip them also.
Well, of course, yeah.
Give them the equipment they need to be successful.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. All right. Moving on then, 10A, the city bill list for our review. No motion needed. And then we have our 10B liaison and administration report. We can start. Where, Councilor Brennan?
I went to the downtown Shakopee banquet this week for the fundraiser. And I bought a lot of things at the auctions.
You all bid me on one, I know.
I, I attended the, the community center, the senior center put on a volunteer booth where you could get to know the different organizations and their volunteer needs. And so, I attended that. And there was quite a few people that were there. So, hopefully they are promoting volunteerism and, and actively participating in it. I went to the Metro Cities meeting and congratulations to Bill Reynolds for being re-elected to the board. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Lehman?
Shakopee Public Utilities Meeting last night. The highlights, I guess, were, well, things that I picked up that are worth mentioning. Four outages, all short time. Some were connections. One was a transformer. The American Public Power Association Certificate of Excellence, Excellence in Reliability Award for both '17 and '18. Out of roughly 600 power suppliers, they're in the top 25% reliability. Then they went through, over the course of them two years, how many outages, what the downtimes were, a lot of data. Too much for me to go through here, but they did adopt the cities, or they awarded contracts for the city's water main repla, their water main replacements in our street projects. What else they have? They're embarking on what I think is a really cool opportunity of a upgrade to their website. Some would argue, maybe it's a little overdue, but it is happening. They're looking at possibly, and it's probably a pretty tight window, but end of the year, December completion. It probably, my guess, might be, take me a little bit longer because they're gonna have to figure out exactly all the pieces to the internal updating and the external links and the, you know, the external links will be updated by those folks, whether it's MMPA or, you know, if they link to the chamber or the city or whatever. Website update is gonna have, they also talked about their, their goals and objectives. They have six of them. They went over three of them. Website was one. Succession planning was another. Communications and PR plan. So, some good things that are actually happening there. I did get a copy of their reliability and outage report. I thought that would be great information to give to Mr. Reynolds and he can share that with council. It's got a whole bunch of different charts and stuff. And I thought it was great information to share. I did also attend the 169 Quarter Coalition full board meeting, which happened to ha, at, by the yard. They make some pretty cool products out there, actually. It's like, wow. And it's 100% recycled onsite, everything. It's amazing. So, thank them for hosting it. We, we specifically talked about the 169 improvements from 41 toward Jordan and some of the challenges with what's going on, as we all know with the 41 overpass, the frontage roads and the, the bridge overpass on, on 169. But there's a lot of movement now on the 282 169 connection into Jordan. Now, there's some funding that was approved. Jordan's on board with that. So, it looks like that project is probably gonna move, move up a little bit too, which is a good thing. We went down the list. St. Peter flooding issues, 169. You know, there was some dollars spent there to prevent that on the north side of 169. Still had an issue. So, although the flood, as we know, was pretty catastrophic in areas. So, that's my report, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Councilor. I had a busy couple of weeks here. The, I met with auditors that's working on our report. It's part of their requirement. Also met with, attended the Fire Relief Association Annual Meeting, which actually generated their action that we took tonight. I too did receive the, or go to the Metro Cities Annual Meeting and they may want to come and talk to us, just in an open format. We have Bill Reynolds on their Board of Directors. So, that was great. Also, a week ago, attended the Minnesota Mayors Association in Stillwater. Some, a lot of conversation on economic development and also have this report on childcare. This is mainly an outstate issue, but where there's not enough daycare and then the, your employers are struggling to find people because they can't have daycare. So, this organization put out that data for, Mr. Reynolds can make a copy and send that to it. We had the Shakopee Basket with a great outpouring of donors and that went to the city of Savage. And then I received the Dilworth, Minnesota Basket and it's kinda interesting that, it's just a random drawing. And I won the Dilworth Basket two years ago. And so, it's kinda interesting.
So, where's our fifth each here?
I did eat the bag of potato chips. Certainly would take all of you out to a cheeseburger at one of their local deals because we got a gift card. But that'd, that'd be a big field trip. But I think one of the biggest highlights was the tour of the Stillwater State Prison. About 1,600 residents there. Tour of the facility. Also sat in on a panel discussion with four residents that are looking to get out in the next four years. And the discussion about kinda their obstacles and challenges about coming back into society. And, you know, and they could be right here in our community as well. It sat with 20 mayors and, you know, it was interesting because we're kinda leery of them, but they're all second chance people. And the, talk to a resident there that's been involved, a resident there for 24 years. Well, how, how far is phone technology? Did he have a phone 24 years ago? Or advancement in computers that while they get to use them, it's very restrictive? And he's talking about getting a driver's license. How do you apply for a job? Probably back then, he filled out a paper application. Well, they don't do that anymore. You go online. So, a lot of different obstacles that, that they would face and try to get them up to speed to integrate and be a, back into being a productive citizen in, in a community would be great. But I do have, for each of you, the longest consecutive prison newspaper, they call it the prison mirror, in the nation, that was started by the Stillwater. And it's, they have a, a resident that is editor and interesting to read. Their little stories on that. So, that was great. Also, I met with the Shakopee Minnewakansoo Community. I too attended the Main Street Banquet. That's a great organization. They lined, announced a great lineup for Rhythm on the Rails this year. I know we have a Wheelie's Family Bike Event coming up. Is that this weekend?
On May 3rd.
May 3rd from 5 to 7 in Hubert Park?
30th.
30th? And then a little note that Sand Venture, I can buy my season pass there at a discount up until May 15th. Also, May 18th, Canterbury Park is celebrating 25 years of, of operation under the Sampson family. You know, that facility went dark for many years. But 25 years of continuous operation, we hope for 25 more. They're having a big celebration out there on Saturday, May 18th. And that is my report. Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the Flower Basket fundraiser. That's what it used to be called, the Downtown Shakopee Group. Great lineup for Rhythm on the Rails. Excited about that opportunity to get our community together again down on the streets of downtown. I also wanted to bring up, in partnership with the city and Scott County, Canterbury Park, County, Scott County Mental Park, County, Scott County Mental He- or Health Matters and the SHIP program, the statewide health improvement partnership, they are sponsoring the Backstretch Community Garden for all you gardeners out there who want to get a garden plot, that's over by Canterbury, by, uh, the CAP Agency. Uh, you can contact, uh, Jamie Carlson at Scott County, uh, or go to the Scott County website, uh, scottcountymn.gov/402/healthycommunities and sign up for a garden plot. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, administration report?
Just a few quick things, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, uh, you know, we've had some really productive weeks, uh, um, the last few weeks and, um, we've got quite a few public-public partnerships to talk about in the future and some public-private partnerships as well that I think, uh, you're all gonna be excited about and, uh, those will be coming to you in the very near future. Uh, and then as part of that actually, uh, you know, I've been had in discussion with the current president of scale, uh, Mayor Kurt Briggs from, uh, Prior Lake and, uh, as part of those discussions, we've decided to move the executive, uh, committee meetings will now be held in, uh, City Hall of Shakopee as opposed to Prior Lake. Uh, then the normal everyday, uh, general meetings will still be held in Prior Lake, but, uh, we kind of wanted to broaden it a little bit and hopefully, uh, um, you know, as part of the next year, continue to focus, scale on those initial, uh, uh, objectives that, uh, we all embraced when it was founded. And so I'm gonna work hard to, uh, try to assist, uh, Mayor Briggs make that happen this year.
Update on the knee?
I, my brace is unlocked, so it's a, it's progress.
All right, uh, moving ahead, uh, Counselor Lehman, 11, other business?
None tonight, Mayor.
Other counselors?
No.
Moving on to, uh, item 12, Counselor Brennan?
Uh, item 12? Um, I make a motion to adjourn till Tuesday, May 21st at 7 o'clock.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn to May 21st. Uh, discussion, 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 all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? We stand adjourned at 10:10, thank you.